Sixth meeting of the
And again, I may not.
Planning Board, the town of Newbury to order.
That thing is not.
And so, do you have a new agenda?
Worst that will happen is.
Right here.
Oh, you do.
I had it earlier than before.
Yeah.
I'll just take one and pass it down. Martha, can we say one for you?
You got them?
Thank you.
So, the first item of business that we have is the meeting minutes from October 16th, which talked about the last time we got together. Now, do we have, has everyone read them?
Yep.
Okay. Can I have a motion on them?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So approved. Old Business, 101 Newbury Port Turnpike, update. I guess that's, John, have you been out there?
Ah, yeah, I was out there a few days ago. Martha, you've been there since I.
Yes, Doug and I actually went out.
I talked to Doug this morning, but when I went out there, it not only was no better, it was substantially worse. There were several piles of miscellaneous debris, broken up concrete, some old broken up asphalt paving, and guess what? Some new asphalt paving.
Yeah.
In the pile that he had removed previously, or in the location of that. And there was a, also a pile of brick that I suspect did not get dumped by the Wisconsin Glacier. So, I went to see Doug, and he got ahold of Angelo, and we agreed that he would get, Doug would serve him with a letter. And I read the letter, had one suggestion that made it a little bit more unpleasant. And, yeah, that's broken up concrete, I think. It looks like, this looks like, whoops.
No, that's all right.
John.
Yeah, that's the mix, yes.
Getting back to your conversation with Doug.
Yes.
What exactly, other than saying fix it, is there anything else? It consequences if he doesn't?
He gave him, he did not want to give me the letter because it hadn't gone out yet. It was still flapping in the breeze. But, he was planning on chasing Angelo down and serving him with the letter. He is a constable, okay? And telling him that he had 15 days to come up with, not only come up with a schedule, but to start work on cleaning things up. And if he didn't, he's going to get turned into the DEP, and then life's going to go to hell in a handbasket.
So, that's a consequence?
That's the consequence, yeah.
That's a consequence, okay.
And that's a very significant consequence. I'd rather have five root canals than be turned into the DEP.
DEP, right.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Do you have to say that?
So, do you, anything more to add to that, based on you and Doug, pretty much the same stuff?
Yeah.
The pictures are great. I mean, it is, it is substantially worse than it was.
Oh, yeah.
It looked like there had been fire, that they dumped a bunch of brush and logs and stuff in one of the holes and had been burning them for a bit. There had been a water main break in Amesbury, and he dug up the road and dumped the road on the site.
So.
So, it's not, it was not a pretty sight. There was a excavator, one of the hydraulic lines had broken, so there was, yes, a leak that they hadn't bothered to put a bucket underneath.
Well, I heard about that. May I see that, David?
Yeah.
So, as far as the contamination of the site, this is a big concern for stormwater.
Well, there's several concerns. One is it's just a mess. The erosion control has been badly compromised. I don't think there's been any real damage done yet for, from erosion from the site, but it's only a matter of time because the silt fence has been dumped on, and, you know, it's just dysfunctional.
But what about the pollutants on site that it could get washed into?
The, I don't know. I just heard about that this morning. I haven't seen that. I didn't get the impression from Doug that that was an imminent danger, but conceivably could get washed into the wetland. What, you, did you see it?
I saw it. Angelo was out there this morning, bright and early, and apparently he cleaned that up. He told Doug that he did. Doug was going to go out to the site today. I was hoping to go with him. I don't know if he was able to, and I didn't, so I'm not quite sure what may have been done, accomplished during the day, but that was one of the things he said he did, was clean that up.
Well, it sounds like between the three of you, Martha, John, and Doug, you guys have it handled.
Well, I think Doug's, Doug's got the biggest club.
He does.
Yeah.
He does.
Doug, oh, yeah. And he's, he's swinging it, so.
Okay.
His feeling, Doug's feeling was that he had scared Angelo to death. He was, the kid was trembling.
Well.
That's always a good thing.
Well, he hasn't, honestly, he hasn't performed the way we expected him to.
Completely not.
Yes, you may. Yes, you may.
After going out and looking at it myself, the problem there is he's using that in a different way than he originally bought it or said he was gonna. It was going to be a building and all that.
That's right.
And what he's using it for is a laydown area for the end of the day. If he's got surface materials, he dumps it, and that sort of thing. And so, the way it's getting used isn't the way that it was presented to the town.
Or the, or the way it was approved.
Yeah, that's right.
By us and by you.
It's a different, because you go out and look at it, and what it is, is, it's like we've described before, a contractor laydown area, you know, where they put, the end of the day, they got a half a truckload of stone or something, and they dump it there. And the problem is, he started using it before he made any honor of it, okay? So, the stuff, there's a lot of stuff, I think, in those pictures that was from clearing the lot, for God's sakes, a lot of the stumps and everything. And, but, again, he's using it from a different purpose than, than we wanted it used.
That's right. That's right.
Doug and I were talking about that as well, and that he's really using his contractor's yard, which, you know, that requires a special permit. He, he applied for a permit for, you know, office, general offices.
Right.
And he has told Doug that he is required by his lender to have the building in place by July. So, he's applying on doing that, but that's not the way he's using it now.
And he, he had told us, the last time he was before us, that he would start blasting and preparing for the foundation now, November, November. So, but we'll see what happens.
That's that place on Route 1, David?
I catch, caught on court, caught on.
Okay, the stormwater rules and regs, revision and update, just a quick status? I know they've been around the block.
I don't think there's anything new on that.
Nothing new. Okay. And just in terms of, just to remind us where that's going, is that it's going through reviews by Doug and the Department of Health and others, and some of your contacts?
Yeah, some of, I've got a couple of engineers that owe me an answer.
Okay.
I've got one response. I want Joe to have a look at them.
Yes, Joe should take.
But I haven't been pushing anybody for a couple of reasons. One, it kind of goes with the subdivision rules and regs, which are not yet out there for review.
Right.
And it's, it's like love and marriage. You've got to have them both together. And we don't have the subdivision rules and regs yet.
Now, I thought, just to have, but the subdivision rules and regs have been recast, haven't they?
Oh, yeah.
So, they're ready, they're ready to go, and so we could.
Well, pretty much.
Where are we?
Kind of the technical areas that John was looking at have been redrafted, but there's still administrative portions that.
And so, is that you working on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's some things that Martha from the get-go was unhappy with.
All right. So, so can we have, do we, as a goal, want to have something done before the end of this calendar year?
I would say by early next calendar year, so that we, at the latest, so that we can roll in with.
And so, so we'd wind up on the stormwater regs and the subdivision regs by mid-January?
Have the public hearing.
Okay.
Public hearing in what, February?
Well, public hearing probably, we rolled that in.
I'm just wanting to make that. I'm putting things out for people to respond to.
Well, I'd rather, really would rather not put it off till April. The, the year for the reporting to the EPA ends 31 March. And I really, really, really want to be able to say we've done it, as opposed to we gonna, you know? I've had several years of I'm gonna.
When, when if we, for the annual town meeting, when do we anticipate maybe a public hearing being?
They usually have it in late March or else in April. So, that's why I'm just thinking about budget-wise, having one public hearing instead of two.
That was always our goal.
Oh, yeah.
Our goal was to have one.
Right.
So, the question is, is if, if we want to do this in timely fashion, and you have a deadline that you want to meet, we might have to move up the public hearing to meet your deadline. So, when is your deadline that you want this completed by?
Thirty-one, I want it adopted by the planning board and the Concom, and whoever adopts, whoever ends with it.
By 31 March?
By 31 March.
Does this have to go to Intel meeting? No?
No, none of this is, it's all administrative.
So, we need to see something reviewed by Joe, reviewed by Doug, and others by mid-January? Does that make sense to everybody?
So, if, I guess I have a question. We're assuming that we have a public hearing, and then at that public hearing, we're going to approve it after, during that meeting? Is that what?
Well, immediately thereafter.
Or the next meeting?
Yeah.
So, then if we get the calendar out, then that, we only have two meetings in March. So, that means it would have to be the first meeting in March.
Right.
Would have to be the public hearing.
Early March, yeah.
So, then if that's the case, if it's first week of March, then you're working backwards. How many reviews do we have to go back and forth when we get the next?
We don't know. We don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
How many reviews do we have to do as a board?
Where is it going after like this?
On the subdivision regs and stuff like that? And I don't know, we, let's face it, for two years, we worked on this, and it should be pretty tight.
I don't, yeah. I, what I would think would we do is, when Martha has it all ready, issue it to everybody. We look at it, and then at the following meeting, whenever that would be, presumably in January, we vote on putting that out for review of everybody.
But in terms of the regs, we're not reinventing this. We've, we've gone through the regs and made substantial changes already.
But my concern is, is that we're going to get a finalization of a document from Arthur.
Right.
Then it's going to go to the various department heads.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
And then we're going to have some changes, like always.
Yes.
Some minor changes.
Yes.
And then we're going to have to go through that again. So, we're looking at at least two or three meetings to do that, correct?
I think so.
Yeah, depends on how fast we can get it back from department heads, but, yeah.
So, that means that we have to have this document by, like, first meeting in January?
Yeah, I think so.
I would agree, that would be.
I mean, it doesn't seem like we have any room there to push it back.
And even though you've got the holidays, Martha, I think we're going to have to do it that way, or else it'll, it'll just slide. So, I think you need to just put that on your, okay? Is that all right?
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That when we send it out for review, we send what I would call a review directive with it.
Yes.
And that essentially sort of says what to look at.
What to look for.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. We'll do that. Okay. Okay, so, the summary of this is that we want to have the, what we, what you are calling the final subdivision regs and stormwater regs to have to this board by early, the first meeting in January, okay? For our review.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And the, the wetland regs, I mean, the stormwater regs are essentially done right now.
Right.
There's, there's one thing that we're waiting on Ginny to deal with, and that's relative to fees to support the program. And we have not as yet heard from her.
It's 7:15, and so I think it's time to, what are we doing, reopening or continuing?
Continuing the public hearing against the selectmen.
Continue, all right, so we're continuing, and then you need to.
We're continuing the public hearing.
Chuck.
From, what was the date we're continuing from?
Chuck.
October 16th.
October 8th?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, okay. All right. It's, we're open. Motion reopen?
Motion open.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We reconvened.
So, I think that what we would need to do is have the applicant go back over where he is, and because there were a number of questions between our reviewer and their engineer, who's Tom, and let's have a summary of where we are in that. Is that okay?
So, just, just a quick update, a little housekeeping. Mike Bulgares was not at the last session, and so he has viewed the tape, short as it was, and certified that he watched it, so that will be entered into the file.
Okay.
And we, on, on Monday, we received updated drawings from Tom Minetta, the applicant's engineer. They went to our review engineer that morning, and we received comments from him mid-afternoon today. So, I did send a copy of those review comments out to everybody. I don't know whether you had a chance to, if you received them or had a chance to read them. I do have hard copies here for anybody who would like to have them.
I had a question. So, the bolded statement underneath each comment was a second review?
Yes.
And so, a lot of those had been addressed?
Right.
So, Tom, where is it? In Joe's responses to you, he appears to have saying that everything is in order. The only thing is, he said that you didn't make any comments on two items.
Well, actually, there's a third one flapping in the breeze. I think, Martha, I was certain that this, right out back, we've got an AC EC. Or do we? Do I have that wrong?
It's close. It's not on the property.
No, no, I understand that. But we're discharging to it.
Towards it.
Yeah. And.
I need one of those.
We just got one.
I need one. I need one.
But the unresolved issues that I saw were not stormwater related.
Right, exactly. The other two were slopes and parking.
You know, these are slopes and parking, and we can have a discussion about that, but can we put to bed the issues of stormwater and then focus on those, or not?
Well, his, I've only had a very short time to look at this, and the, the Concom is meeting, has not approved this as yet.
Right, they're scheduled to meet on the 19th, right?
Yeah. So, what I'm going to throw out, and what Martha, Martha had suggested too, was that we approve this with a view towards, with contingent upon the Concom dealing with it. The, the stormwater things are under site plan review, as I see it, are both planning board and Concom responsibilities, but, you know.
To some extent, selectmen too.
Say again?
Selectmen as well, because we're supposed to be dealing with, well, you know, the Water Supply Protection District.
Right.
Right? So, it's sort of all three.
Yeah, absolutely right. But the details of it, we're following the DEP guidelines.
Right.
And, I didn't mean to cut you out, but the details of it, I think.
Procedurally, we've got to keep that in mind.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So, are you saying that we're just going to move on on this, or we're going to go through point by point on these?
I don't think we need to go through.
You know something? It won't take, it won't take long. Have you got a hard copy?
I do.
Okay. We'll take, go right down. Number, number one, the report should be stamped, signed, and dated. And so, this issue appears to be addressed. Is that all set?
Yes.
It will, it will be, okay. Number two, one drainage area map was included that appears to depict post-development drainage areas only. A pre-development drainage area map should be submitted. Has that been done?
Yes, yep. And the bold is his comment, the issue has been addressed.
Yep, okay.
So, yep.
All right, number three, an error in the report summary with a statement, this is not considered a critical area, and says, and goes on and on. It says, the report summary still states the area is not considered a critical area, and you support that? You have something to support that assumption?
He's correct. What it is, is on the, on my summary page.
Yep.
Sheet one, I changed that the site is in the groundwater protection area, but I left the comment above it in there that says it's not in a critical area, which it does eventually get to an area of critical concern. So, that, my understanding from Joe is that he wants that comment changed, that it's in a critical area.
That was your concern, John?
As far as the TSS.
That was one of them, yeah.
As far as the TSS removal and treatment, we've, we've complied with all of those, because it's in the zone two.
Acted as though it were.
But I left the comment in the, in the thing.
My, my issues are largely housekeeping issues.
Yep.
And I think Doug and I, I'd rather talk to Doug in detail after we both had a chance to, to review it.
Right.
Because I've got a number of things that I don't think matter, but should be cleaned up.
Yep, yeah, yeah. The calculations were based correctly. It's, I left the comment in, in the summary.
And number four, this issue's all set, right?
Yes, yep. We changed the calculations to address that, yep.
So, I actually, I wanted clarification on that. So, you changed the time of concentration according to the previous surfaces? Is that what you changed it to?
It's, you can direct enter a time, time of concentration, time the water takes to travel.
Yeah.
Or you can, you know, calculate each individual one. So, rather than using a generic.
Six minutes.
Yeah, we, we use, we default to that a lot of times. Joe preferred that we didn't, so we didn't. We changed each time.
The question is, you did, you calculated all that.
We did a time of, time of concentration calculation for each subcatchment, yes.
In Tom's defense, it's fairly common to use a five or six.
I'm completely familiar with it. I'm a civil engineer. You can move on.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, yes, we did do that, yep.
Okay. Number five, that's all set?
Yes.
Number six, you're all set there? Seven, all set?
Yep.
Eight, you provided the information on the groundwater information and soil?
Yes, it's on the plan.
It's on the plan? All right. Now, the other things, number nine, provide, I would recommend for the engineer, provide vehicle turning movements on the plans to verify that vehicles can adequately access the proposed parking spaces. And have you?
What we did is, we moved some of the parking around. We made wider turnout areas for where it backed out, and we put the measurements on the plan.
Okay.
That's how we addressed that.
That's what he wanted, all right. The 12-foot driveway along the rear of the site could be problematic in that it does not allow for two-way traffic flow. The driveway provides access to three residential parking spaces, but also two garage doors at the rear of the Family Enrichment Center.
Okay.
What are we setting on that?
I can make comment on that.
Yes.
I think that the second half of that statement, but also to the two garage doors at the rear of the Family Enrichment Center, he believe, my understanding is that he thought that this garage was used for the, for playmakers, but it isn't. The garage is for the residential use of the house. So, this driveway is strictly residential.
Okay.
Because we have the three residential spots here. And what I did on this plan is I highlighted it in the, in the tan here. Previously, we had the 18-foot deep spots, and we had a 12-foot aisle width. With, in this area of the parking, I've increased the aisle width to 18 feet.
And so, the parking demand is yourself, and you have a tenant? So, there's two units that you need to use three parking spaces?
Three parking spaces plus two, two garage spaces. So, that, that, that is in compliance with your parking regulations.
Right. Right. No, I think the issue is whether or not it's wide enough.
Right. And that's why we, we took this area and widened it out to 18 feet. So, for two reasons. One, it makes it obviously swing in out of those spaces easier. And then, if for some reason somebody's coming down, somebody's, there's an area here now that you can pull off, and somebody can still get by.
Is there a straight line of sight from that, that line of the driveway? It's curved on the map.
It is curved right here.
But can, if you enter it at one side, can you see if someone's at the other end?
By the, by the time you get to this point, you definitely can.
Okay.
Because we cut this back and put that as a two-to-one slope.
Couldn't really, that was a top.
Yeah, you can from the top.
You can from the top.
Once you're on your way down.
Once it starts to narrow there.
Right, once you start.
I don't think you're going to bump into anybody.
Okay, good. All right.
Same on this 11. Guardrail? I don't.
Yeah, I, well.
Has anybody thought of the guardrail? I hadn't.
I've had some thoughts on it, and Tom and I have talked, and I, I bounced a couple of ideas off him.
I understand how this is.
And he has some problems complying with the things that I was suggesting, and I understand his concerns. So, I'm inclined to let that and the, basically all three of these go as they are now. Not that they are a perfect solution, but this is an awful site to do anything with, and I think Tom has done the best he could with it, without an undue expenditure of money. So, I'm happy with it.
And it's not like there's going to be a lot of traffic.
It's not like it's a high-traffic area.
No.
It's not a seven-story apartment building.
Do you think that we can, I'm opening up to all the other board members to ask a question when we go down?
Sure.
Yep.
Because one of the comments that came at the last meeting, which I, I'm not sure how it was addressed, was the driveway. You just went over it, but I don't understand. We were talking about coming down the hill there, where it's narrow. How is that addressed now, when you have vehicles coming in opposite directions?
This is, well, one of the comments is that he thought that part of this driveway was for the commercial use, which it isn't.
Which I know that.
So, it's all residential use.
But the question when we had them, we were, as a board last time.
Right.
We were here was, is if you have a car coming down the hill, and you have a car going up the hill, was there going to be any place to turn over the side, or how?
This, this was originally 12 feet right here, from, from the back of the space to the edge of the pavement.
But that's the back of the building. We're talking about the side of the building, the side driveway, when you're coming around the building.
This, this area? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Sean, please.
That, that comment on item, I'm sorry, on item 10, he was, Joe was regarding this area. Previously, that was twelve feet and I made it eighteen feet.
Yeah, that's not addressing the comment that the board made last time, that's why.
And one of the comments from the board was, this whole driveway is twelve feet wide, the remainder of the driveway is twelve feet. I think, if, if we're talking about the same thing. And the question was, you know, if, if somebody backs out of here and starts heading out and somebody's coming out, where do they, where do they pull off? Well, by, I guess my interpretation was that if this went from twelve to eighteen, some, this person could actually pull off right here and this person could go right by or pull into the spot.
Does anybody understand my concern? You come down that hill, someone has to back up, someone has to move, that's all. The board's okay with that?
Well, it's, it's the probability of, of how many, I mean, this is not a commercial establishment, it's not a retail establishment.
It's just the people that are living in the house.
It's the people that are living in the house and it seems to me that they could figure it out.
There's three of them.
I'm gonna say, I had the same problem this morning, my driveway.
I have the same problem in my driveway and I.
I think the issue perhaps is the hill, is the steepness, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, if the rest of the board's fine with it, that, I'll, I'll go with it, but I see that as being a concern. I have a concern with that.
Okay. Linda?
I'm good with it.
Okay. And David, you're right?
Yeah, I think largely because it's clear that that essentially is a resident use as opposed to.
It's a two-unit though, it's not a one-family, it's two-family.
Right, but you know, um, you have to live together.
Right, I assume they know, they'll know each other.
Yeah, this is a, this is obviously the single-family and this is a one-bedroom apartment.
Majority rule.
What about, what about the issue of the guardrail? Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Where would, I, I never quite identified where.
It would be, it would be so that someone doesn't go slipping off to the side as you're coming down the hill.
This area right here. Previously, we had this two-to-one slope. It's a riprap slope right up to the edge of the pavement.
Mm-hmm.
Now, as part of the new stormwater system, we have a four-foot wide swell that's less than a foot deep. So really the car would have to get through the swell and then down the slope.
Right. Good?
Good.
Considerable, yeah.
I mean, it could help a car that's slipping and on ice and at the same time it could impede snow removal, so the question is what.
Normal practice is you would, you would have a guardrail on a two-to-one slope because three-to-one is your magic number. You can mow a three-to-one, you could, your car is probably not gonna flip. But given the fact that there's a ditch there that's gonna function to a degree as a guardrail. Anybody, nobody is gonna go down there at sixty-five miles an hour, that's gonna, they're gonna be creeping.
Only once.
Yeah, I guess. Good point.
Good point. You guys, David?
The only thing I thought about was the kind of thing that they're actually putting onto I-95 down in Topsfield, which is.
Oh, those, um, not a guardrail, it's, it's a wire.
Yeah.
It's a wire guard.
Yeah, it's essentially what's called a throwback. I mean, it's intended that if you only hit it at the right angle, it throws you back.
It's like a, like a slingshot or something like that, yeah.
That, you know, and those can be found, I think, at a very sort of minimal section and low cost if, if it requires it. But I, that's a very tough call from a drawing, I think.
It's a which?
A very tough call from a drawing, seeing the actual thing, I.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's, it's a very low-traffic area and there's only four cars down there, okay? Uh, and it's a twenty-four-hour day and it is, uh, you're, you're almost forced into going slowly because you're entering a narrow road. You're not coming right off a highway where you're still thinking fifty-five miles an hour. And you do have the ditch, which will tend to do exactly what you said.
Yep.
You know, I think somebody's gonna get stuck in the ditch before they're gonna flip and go down the hill.
I would agree.
I mean, I'd just like to make one comment as the owner of a common driveway that serves two homes. Uh, and that is that, you know, what's crucial is really the site distances and the backing up sort of thing and, because we have a couple of pullouts. I, I have a thousand-foot long driveway, so it's a much bigger deal than this, but, you know, the key is that if you have the pullouts, whatever, you wanna have them so that you've got a good site distance is sort of the next thing, because it's a real pain to back up even a short distance for most people.
Oh, yeah.
On a twelve-foot driveway. And I haven't walked the site with this in mind, but I've been there quite a few times and I'm just thinking that with that curve and that hill that, uh, there could be this sort of issue that you don't see the car if you're coming from the top.
Well, you won't, I think that it's pretty clear, you won't see it as you enter it.
Right, you're, you're gonna have to come around the corner. I think that one thing we can remember is that the people that are driving down here are gonna be pulling into one of these three spots or to the garage. So, you know, if somebody's coming down here, chances are they're pulling in one of these spots anyway before, you know, Chrissy comes home or at the end of the day is, is pulling out of this driveway.
Yeah, I mean, what I find just is that with our neighbors, you know, we tend to go to work at the same time, we come to come home from work at the same time and so, but it's a little different.
Everybody's heading in the right direction. Yes.
Yeah, but it's, uh, I think it's also a little different situation because here it's the, uh, it's not like the, the owners are gonna be doing long commutes to Boston like, uh, they're walking across the parking lot to the business. As long as you get along with your neighbors.
People will get used to it, they will have to get used to it.
Yeah.
So it's up to you, I guess.
So I think that's up to number eleven and number twelve, the forbay and detention basin grading depicted on three or four appears to be addressed. Now, he says appears, was it addressed?
Yeah, what it was is we had it on this sheet and then a detailed sheet. And there was some question, the, some of the inverts that showed up here weren't the same, so that they are not, they do, they're the same now.
Okay. Can you direct us as to what you think we ought to be doing now?
Yeah, I just, I have one.
One question which I raised to Tom about the, the soils, did you have a chance to, because I, I also talked to John about it, it looks like the.
It looks like it's reversed.
The soil.
Yeah, I think it's just a typo.
I think it's just a typo that, I listened, test bit one is two and two is one, so, yeah.
And, and that resolves it, I mean, the, the plan had it incorrectly?
The plan had it incorrect.
The plan was incorrect, but it's, it's quite fixable.
Okay.
It's quite fixable and, and the next filtration rate was very low anyways.
But the incorrectness wasn't a problem?
No, it's not a problem.
Okay.
No, it's not a problem, it's conservative if anything.
Alright.
No, it was designed correctly, it's just the sign was wrong.
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
It was, it's basically a typo in the drawings.
That's fine.
Yeah, just a reversal. No big deal.
So, um, if the, both boards are satisfied that all input has been received on the project and you might wanna see if any, there are any other comments from.
Well, to see if there's any comments from, is there anyone in the audience who is here to comment on this issue?
Do the, selectmen have any comments on it?
No, I'm, I'm ready to close the hearing.
Okay, yeah, alright.
Any, any, any other board members?
No, okay.
So then each board would vote to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Favorite closing?
Vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
Selectmen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're closed.
And then, um, the next step is to, uh, basically to deliberate. And I, I do have some materials here for both boards. One for the selectmen based on the, um.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the zoning for the special permit for water supply protection. It's on the second, second and third page really, starting down at the bottom with the, what the determination is for you guys. Starts down there, decision criteria.
Want me just pass it around?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so Martha, procedurally, this is one of these things where we essentially vote on each of them and it's an and, so we have to approve.
Yeah, I guess we have to approve.
Yeah. So it's really the, the O-one and the O-two. The conditions and then D says we can add requirements.
Yeah.
That the, the, he wants to move forward or sort of approving points one and two, is that correct? For those selectmen? Martha, for the.
Yeah. Alright. So you, you wanna make a motion?
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, uh, agree, I'm not sure what the term is for, uh, the point C-one, which is in no way during construction or thereafter adversely affect the existing or potential quality or quantity of water that is available in the water supply.
Right, so you vote to define that.
Define that, yeah.
Right, okay, so we'll.
Second?
Yeah.
Kathy, you've got, you've got that right?
No.
Okay, oh, Chuck, give, give her number one, okay? And the motion was that we find that, um.
Is this what we proposed?
That in no way.
In no way.
What have we proposed here? Did you understand what you said?
Okay, Chuck seconded it. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor of David's motion?
Aye.
Aye, good.
Okay, let Kathy get caught up.
For site plan, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We're approving the application.
D, D zero one.
So I'll, I'll move on point number two, that we find that, uh, the, uh, project is designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other water-related natural characteristics of the site.
Five.
Aye.
Second?
Yep.
Okay, another discussion?
Yeah, John five.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, David, do you, should we throw one in that we don't wanna add any other requirements to kind of take care of?
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, we just, we pretty much know what the revisions could be, so, uh, I don't see that we need to.
Say that we're not gonna drop any specific requirements.
Do we, do we have to vote on that if it's a, if it's a may or?
Bear in mind, we still got ConCom.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's.
Happened.
Yeah.
That's probably dotting ice and crossing cheese, but.
Without their permit, we can't do anything anyway.
Yes, I don't think we really need that.
It says may, so if you don't, if you don't put in there any conditions.
As usual, right, well, we need to.
May on your approval.
We don't really have to do anything.
Well, we could do it. We'll, we'll just not do it, I think we're better off, it's clear.
Say that the ConCom is a, a go-no-go thing anyway.
That's right, fail-safe. Alright, so we're all set?
Well, I guess then, um, do we wanna wait to vote on a sort of total approval till we have the revisions or we could make the, because if we vote now, then we'd probably have to outline what the provision, what the revisions are that we would require or.
I think we.
That we, the public hearing's closed, so we could vote at our next select, regular selectance meeting.
And it would be good if the decision can be written by your meeting on Tuesday, so that you could.
Yeah, can you help us with that then?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's good. Yeah, we've only got to Tuesday, so it's not like putting it way off and, good, good idea. Yep. Okay, good enough, then we'll put it on the agenda for Tuesday, Kathy? Yep. That will be written up by Martha, or guidance from Martha. Alright, well, it's only one step.
It doesn't matter.
Alright, so we're, we're all set?
We adjourn?
Promotion adjourned.
Promotion adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye, done?
Thank you.
Bye.
Aye, one and all.
Bye.
Bye, Salma.
Thanks, Jeff.
Good to see you.
We need to vote on something ourselves, do we?
I think we do.
I think we do.
So what exactly is the language you want us to, um, refer to?
Who are you talking to, me?
No, I'm asking Martha.
Yeah, actually, is there an extra word of this? So, um.
Night, Mike.
For the planning board, um, if you look at the decision criteria at the bottom of.
Four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could either vote on each one of those criteria individually. In the past, the board has actually voted to find that all of those criteria have been met instead of voting on each one of those, uh.
Yeah.
Individually. And then if there are any conditions that you want to, um.
Well, there is one we've already referred to, which is that everything is gonna be dependent upon the conservation commission.
ConCom. So, uh, what's the will of the board, do you want, would you want to, uh, proceed with approving all of these conditions, all of these criteria? As a group?
I'm okay with that.
A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H?
Yeah, as a group.
I'm fine with that.
Any reason not, okay?
Word for me.
So if that's the case, can we have a motion?
So move.
Oh, wait, but, this is not, this is not the final approval, right? We still, we still have to talk about a few more things, so.
Well, no, this, this is the decision criteria shall approve, so, uh.
We do it with one vote as opposed to.
I just wanna clarify, we, we haven't discussed performance guarantee, is that after or is that now? Okay, just making sure.
You're just voting to find whether it meets.
Meets these criteria.
Okay, okay.
And then you have to want to put any conditions on it like a performance guarantee or, um, uh, ConCom approval, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Alright. So with that, can I have a motion on the decision criteria?
I move that we approve the application, um.
That you find the application meets the decision criteria.
Meets, meets the decision criteria, right?
Since we find that the application meets the criteria, um, as stated, A through, wherever it is, H.
A through H.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So passed. Uh, Kathleen, are there other issues you'd like to bring up?
Well, I just wanna make sure we get on record if we're gonna discuss, um, performance guarantee. Martha, that was my list. Now, I think the only thing David, David and I were just quickly going through on the paper was, is the only concerns were probably the stormwater issues. If there's anything that was dug up from pavement that might have issues with erosion, but other than that, I don't see any issues really that would. Does anybody else?
Did it have any issues for?
Um, regards of retaining, yeah, performance guarantee.
Oh, okay, gotcha. No, because it, basically, it's, it's the building that's there, right?
Right, that's the way I look at it.
Right.
There's two additions, there are additions to those, to both those buildings, right?
Right, but they're not taking down the buildings, they're not, no, not changing any of that, so.
So I don't think we're worried about having an empty shell or a foundation, it's more of, um, if John thought there would be an issue of if they dug up the parking lot or something and they didn't finish, whether or not there would be concerns with erosion for stormwater, that would be the only issue.
If there is no erosion control out there, that would be a big issue, of course.
Um, and I personally would leave that up to you, except I just wanna bring it to the technical board, that's all.
That's a good point. Uh, I have no idea how you would value that, John, do you?
I haven't given any thought to it, like I say. What I was hoping to do, now assuming we vote tonight to approve subs, uh, subject to the ConCom approval, I wanted to get with Martha and Doug the first of the week, go through after we've all had a chance to actually seriously review the final submission and see what we wanna do, talk to Tom, probably talk to Joe, get his input by telephone or whatever and, uh, have that squared away by the conservation commission meeting, the third, the third Tuesday, I'm sorry.
So I, I, I'm under the impression that all, anything we wanna have the applicant do, we have to decide tonight. So I'm not quite sure what the meeting would be that you're having after this, today.
Well, the meeting would be to sort out, Doug has issues, I have issues, they are not huge things, but they, they probably should be addressed, in my opinion.
Are they, are they ConCom issues?
They are ConCom issues, but they're also ours, we have the same issues.
No, but if we're, if our decision is contingent on the ConCom.
That's fine.
Then it will be addressed at the ConCom and not here.
I think that would be okay, I don't see why there's a problem with that.
That gives me comfort.
Yeah.
What about you, David?
Uh, yeah, I'm thinking a little further on and that is that you presumably will issue order of conditions from the conservation commission eventually?
There will be, there will have to be an order of conditions, yes.
And that order of conditions will mean that the site process will be monitored?
Uh, you'd like to think so, let's hope, yeah.
Well.
That, that is a matter of fact, David, is one of the issues that we're, we're talking about. I don't wanna go into a lot of detail because it hasn't been run out, but that is a big.
Fine, because the one thing that I see that the conservation commission has as an instrument, which is sort of like our performance guarantee, is the order of conditions monitoring because this is what's going on currently with our earlier discussion on Route One, where we essentially have somebody who's not doing what they.
Yeah.
Said they were gonna do and we know that now we essentially have to pull the plug.
Yeah.
And it would seem to me that I don't think this is gonna happen with your project, I'm not saying that, but.
We didn't think that was gonna happen with 101E, so.
No, I, I know, but I was gonna say to ensure both us and you, I think that that's an important thing that the conservation commission should commit themselves to a real, what shall I say, uh, thorough, uh, follow-up to the order of conditions that's imposed.
Well, I guess the question I have is can we make a decision in contingent upon a ConCom approval and then the ConCom adopting those provisions that you just talked about?
Mm-hmm.
Well, what if they decide, what if, what if they decide they don't wanna do that, though?
Well, then they don't do it.
And then, then our decision isn't a good thing, because it was, we approved it.
What, what do you think is the probability of them doing it?
Well, I think the probability of it being watched very carefully and, and enforced is quite high. But, um, I think we were also talking about, were we not some sort of a surety or are we?
Well.
I was thinking, somebody asked, what did I think, and I hadn't given a thought to a surety amount, but.
Well, this is surety relative to performance guarantee.
Yeah.
And, um, I hadn't given that any thought until Kathleen brought it up.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I've given a thought, say, we've gotta have one, but I don't have, I haven't quantified it at all. It may be something that, that Doug, Martha and I in talking to Tom can, can sort out, uh.
Who's Tom?
The engineer.
But I, I think that needs to be, I mean, basically that would need to be decided at, at this point, really.
We have to have it amount tonight?
Yes, yes.
Can we give it amount and it could be less?
You don't have to do it tonight, right, you could wait. You've still got the ConCom in process.
I'm under, I'm under the impression the applicant would like decisions made as soon as possible, so.
To, to say something like, nope, nothing greater than excellent?
Yeah, we, we wanna have it make some sense, but, you know, I don't wanna.
I was gonna say, what are we, we're now, we're sort of changing words in midstream. We started off with performance guarantee, now we're talking surety, which is which?
Well, I, I see them as synonymous, but what am I missing?
Alright, that's fine.
Yeah. Uh, there's a number of ways we could do it, a passbook, a bond, da-da-da-da-da.
Now, why would you wanna do it?
Same reason that we are nervous about the other one down the street.
Yes, but it seems to me what we were just saying is that there isn't concern that this project won't be. That there, there are.
Prosecuted diligently, yeah.
The, the worst that could happen is the parking spaces are half torn up.
Going up.
Right, I mean, I'm, I'm confused here as to what we think we are sureting against.
Right, I mean, and there are a couple of things we know, I mean, the existing pavement is going to remain, right? You're not gonna be digging up the existing parking spaces, so what will be constructed is gonna be the, um, you know, the stormwater back here, the driveway back there, um, what's existing there on the ground is gonna pretty much stay in the front for now. And I was thinking the same, you know, along the same lines that you were, that the conservation commission and the order of conditions, in a sense, I think, probably effectively addresses some of.
Because otherwise, all that's gonna happen here is if it doesn't work for some reason, and I don't, you know, I'm not trying to rub salt in the wound, Chrissy, but, um, I know it'll sound that way. What will happen is you'll have a degraded site, which you, but we won't have any issue like we do, which is very different right now.
Very different.
Okay?
I think it's, I mean, it, it's just that it's, another site don't review, that's the only thing that's the same.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I, I agree, yeah, but we don't wanna, I think, confuse.
Kathleen, do you have an, I know you brought this up, do you have a?
I brought it up specifically because I just wanna make sure that we got on record that we discussed it.
Okay.
I personally don't see a need for it unless John can make an argument for it. Because that, just what Martha was saying, that there is basically, she's working with the site as is.
I don't see a need for it.
Do you have a motion on this?
Uh. Yes, alright. Okay, I move that we add a condition of approval, which is that the conservation commission's order of conditions shall be stringently, strictly enforced.
Right.
To.
Sure, thanks. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got no problem with, with that motion like that, obviously.
Do we need to do anything else?
Well, financially, I guess where, what we've concluded is that we are not gonna ask for a surety.
No.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, we're not going to, we're not going. We're not going to? David? David?
Okay, I move that we have discussed and decided that no surety, no, no performance guarantee, because we need to use the text here, shall be required for this plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
So in terms of timing, we will need to all put together a decision, which the board needs to review. I guess one question is whether, whether that could be done a little off schedule or at the next meeting?
Do it off schedule.
You can do it, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Can you send it to us to read, and then we can come in and sign, or whatever we have to do?
Well, I think the board may need to take a vote to actually approve the regulations.
Okay.
Okay.
So I can try.
But you're, you're right now, are you, are you doing any work out there?
No.
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 Are you going to hold until you get your order of conditions from, from the Concom?
Yeah, you kind of have to, twice, like.
The majority of the sites within the hundred.
I mean, I, I'm just curious if you're doing any work inside?
No, we haven't closed our property, so.
You can do inside, inside work.
We don't own any of the property.
You don't own it? When, when do you plan on closing?
Uh, last June. If I could close before Christmas, I think that would be imperative to us, so.
That would be nice, okay. Well, Martha, do we need to take any further action tonight?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay. So, good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
And if we do, we can do it, then we do sign the, right?
So what I'll do is I'll draft a decision instead of that out to you, if you're going to find a, to meet with one.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to take it?
One of you must be Mr. Ring.
Here.
Come forward. And anyone else who you'd like to come with you and grab a chair?
We need you to talk into the microphone.
No.
Oh, wait, is that us?
Right here.
Yeah, pull this one over there.
Just pull that chair over.
This is close and personal, is that what?
So, we should introduce ourselves since we know who you are. All right, I'm John Weiss, I'm Jerry Ward.
John O'Connell.
Catherine Pearson.
Linda McCamick.
George Morris, associate member.
And David Powell.
And what, you know, who's our accountant?
We have a selectman behind us, too.
Oh, and David Mountain, he's our...
I used to be at the planning board, so I'm pretty familiar with the project.
Ah, okay, that's great. And he's kind of a neighbor of ours. Well, I appreciate your being able to come here as well. You all, Caldwell Farm, present?
Yes.
Well, well, I mean, our objective in asking you all and you to be here today was to see to what extent we can have a discussion about moving forward on something that's been in the offing for quite some time, since September fourth of two thousand and four. And that is to see to, that we can develop a trail at Caldwell Farms that meets both your objectives and our objectives. And we'd like to see if we can somehow move forward and see if we can accomplish something along those lines. I know that as, as I've gotten into this, there've been a couple of questions that folks have asked me about it, and so two caveats are that if, if we are able to move forward with a trail, that any cost involved with creating a trail would be on the town, not on the HOA, or not on the debt burden. The second is that this is not a trail that's a bridle trail, it's not a wide trail, and in all of the language that is in the easement, which was given by your developer back in two thousand and four, it talks about a primitive and natural trail, which would be disturbed only slightly in its creation. So it's not something that, it's not something that is like Maudsley, if you've ever walked around Maudsley, it's not Maudsley. It, it's much more reminiscent of Old Town Hill, if you've taken any walks on around Old Town Hill, especially down near the Parker River. So with those as, as just maybe thoughts on our part, maybe we'd like to hear from you, Jerry, and, and anyone else who wants to pick in about what, what you all think about all this, and we know there's been contention in the past, we're, we're hopefully don't want to go back over that, we, we'd really like to see if we can move forward, so.
Would you mind if I stand up?
You can, well.
I have a statement I'd like to read.
Sure.
Would that be all right?
Sure, you can.
I just, I do better standing up than sitting down, thanks. I'm Jerry Ring, I'm the president of the Caldwell Farm Condominium Association, Board of Directors.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that your statement's heard on TV.
Okay, thank you. Should have brought makeup, right? We have a five-member board, and the other board members are here with me tonight. Also with me is Dick Bazergan. Dick is a forty-plus-year resident of Byfield and Newberry, a community leader, and someone who was also the past president of the condominium association, and Dick would like to say a few words after, after me. I, I have to start by telling you that I have a statement to read, and we circulated this statement, this is a statement on the part of the Board of Directors relating to a trail through our property. We circulated this statement six days ago now to all the members of the Caldwell Farm community, that's sixty-six units. I received back four emails objecting to what I'm going to say tonight, and I got to tell you, that's far less than what I usually get, regardless of what we do.
So how many do you get in favor of it? Four against, how many response you get in favor?
If I don't get anything in, in, I didn't ask for anything in, in favor of it, I didn't ask for anything.
Well, it just implies that only four people, four houses were against.
No, no, it doesn't, no, it doesn't. It was sent out to everybody, and I can tell you from personal experience, and a lot of stuff, these are not bashful people, and if they're unhappy about something, you will hear about it, and you will hear about it very, very directly. So, the statement is, is based on the past meeting that we had and other, other considerations. So I'd like to read the statement if I could, and then we can go from there, how's that? All right? "A trail through our property would severely compromise our right to privacy, safety, and peaceful enjoyment of our property. As stated in the easement, there should be no interference with quote-unquote 'private enjoyment, quiet enjoyment of our property.' Simply put, a trail is not acceptable. It is easy to see what happened when the easement was agreed to. Our developer wanted to know, wanted to build what is now Caldwell Farm. The planning board indicated it would grant a permit, providing the developer agreed to, among other things, a conservation easement. Why wouldn't the developer agree to a conservation easement? He didn't have to deal with the outcome. Until four years ago, four years, when the Governor's Academy requested a meeting to pursue the ideal of a trail, the very existence of a trail easement, not to mention the true ramifications of the easement, were unknown to the members of the Caldwell Farm community. The impact of the easement to the security and privacy of the community was a complete surprise. The meeting, again, held four years ago at our clubhouse, was attended by a broad spectrum of Newberry Town officials, as well as most of our residents. The meeting concluded with a commitment from the Governor's Academy not to pursue the trail, given the concerns of the Caldwell Farm homeowners. In fact, all the emergency response officials, including the police, said it was not a workable idea. Basically, there was no support for a trail. Earlier this year, we had informal conversation with a member of the Triton School Administration, a member of the Triton Board of Education, and a member of the Town of Newberry Board of Selectmen. No one knew of any interest within his or her organization in a trail through our property. In fact, we read recently that Triton now has a cross-country trail available to them. What is accomplished with an unwanted trail through our property? This board and the Conservation Board gets to fulfill the Caldwell Farm quote-unquote unfulfilled obligation. The conference center neighbor to our east can market to non-residents a much longer trail than currently exists. This strongly suggests a trail has extremely limited value to Newberry residents compared to our loss of privacy, safety, and quote-unquote quiet enjoyment of our property. The conservation easement on our property is a clear example of government overreach in a town that traditionally respects individual homeowner rights." I'm going to repeat that, because it is critical and important to us. "The conservation easement on our property is a clear example of government overreach in a town traditionally respects individual homeowner rights. Therefore, I respectfully ask you on behalf of the citizens of Newberry residing at Caldwell Farm to rescind the trail easement that encompasses our property. It is an unacceptable burden that has compromised and continues to compromise our relationship with this community. Reportedly, you have six thousand conservation acres for passive recreation and walking paths to manage. Why single us out? This easement would not have been agreed to without the leverage you had over our developer. As directors of the association, it is our fiduciary obligation to preserve and enhance the value of the community. We must therefore inform you of our intent to oppose any initiative to construct a trail through our property. We ask you to think about the limited value of a trail to a very limited group of stakeholders, and the far greater value destroyed in terms of unnecessary legal expense, goodwill, and relationships from which this town could greatly benefit. Very simply, we want the easement removed." Thank you for listening, I'd like to ask Dick to introduce himself and present his statement.
I don't mind sitting, actually, I prefer to sit, so. My name's Dick Bazergan, and I'm sorry, could you, David, of course I know.
George Morris.
George.
Linda.
John Weiss.
John.
John O'Connell.
Yes, John.
Catherine Pearson.
Thank you. As, as, the reason I, really, the only reason I'm here is I want to be a spokesman as someone who is a resident of the town and has been for over, well, about thirty-seven or forty years. Was on the school committee for eight years, I was on the town government committee that brought us from three selectmen to five, and I've been involved with the town for a very long time, and I love the town, I love the school system, all my kids went there. So I am somebody who, I just want to, want to represent the fact that, you know, I believe in the town, and I believe that things that we do for the town should be good, but I live in a community with friends, sixty-six homeowners, most of whom, based on the meeting that we had, David, you weren't there, I don't think you were there either, were you? No. Based on the meeting that we had, who were vehemently opposed.
Which meeting date?
This, this was a meeting with, with the Governor's Academy.
This was?
Yeah, yeah, this was with Marty Doggett, who's just a great guy, who, if you know, anybody who knows Marty's a wonderful guy. He asked me, I was the president of the board at the time, he asked me what I wanted to happen, and I said, I want it to go away, and it did, we thought. So, here we're back, and, and again, I, I think the, the issue is, you have sixty-six homeowners there who pay about four hundred thousand dollars a year in property taxes with basically no expenses to the town. We don't have any children in the school system, we don't plow our roads, and all we're asking is that we not do, do the trail. So.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay. I don't know if I want to open it up to, anybody else in the audience like the mic? Yes?
You just need to come to the microphone, so that people can identify yourself with the people on TV, that's all. I don't, I wish I could have to be on TV. You look great, thank you. I live in the commu, in Caldwell Farm. You're doing great. You don't have to say anything if you don't want to.
I didn't stand.
Do you want to sit down? Would you like to sit down?
I, I, there's, we were allowed to read this statement. I asked for the documents as far as how Caldwell Farms was set up. And I just don't think that they're really even giving the town a chance. I, I think it was clearly in the documents, I mean, the, the one issue that I did see is that originally it was two hundred feet from their homes, and two of the units were a hundred feet in the original document that was approved. And then, and it did say that the trail easement had to be defined before they could sell any property, and it all of a sudden ended up at fifty feet. And, and the one thing I think that the residents do have a right to have some concern about, I mean, is there's a big difference between one hundred and two hundred feet and fifty feet, especially if it means you don't have many trees, you know, that, that the public trail is almost on your lawn.
Okay, yeah.
So I, I, I see that, and I don't know whether, you know, I'm, I'm in no position to say which way this goes, but I would like to see if there, you know, if the town does say, look, we have, you know, it was in the proposal, it was in the findings, it was in the determination, and we do have a right to this trail, is there any flexibility in the distance between some of the homes, especially some of the people that might be really upset by it? I, I use the trails all the time, I know Elm Street is like a highway, and I, I don't want to say anything to hurt Caldwell Farms, but.
The wording in the easement says the trail easement shall be generally located.
It's in the easement, but if you go back to the original documents on...
But before it was drawn up?
No, this is, this is, this is, it's in a book.
It's the planning board decision, I think she's...
I, I have it, it's the, it was what was decided before Calberry could stop putting in a road.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that, I, I mean, I read these documents, I asked Caldwell Farm for them, and I was given them, and, and I, and I, I mean, if, if I have one personal concern is, you know, I don't want to get into a big legal slugfest, and everybody's spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, and is, is it possible to come up with anything, you know, reasonable? But the original documents that were approved in the beginning of two thousand and four, and, and what was really interesting about it was that Calberry, and I'm assuming he and his engineers, put in, it was two hundred feet between the trail and, they called them the townhouses, I believe, or the buildings, and he, he singled out two units, eighty-two... or the buildings, and that he, he singled out two units, eighty-two and eighty-four, that were 100 feet. So, I mean, this wasn't, I don't think he just pulled numbers out of the sky. There, there obviously was some thought process, and then all of a sudden the trail easement said 50 feet.
So let me, let me ask, David, do you have recollection of what...
I'm actually getting some of the history, because I was involved in drafting it.
You want this to sit instead? It's up to you.
Well, I'm Dave Mountain, currently at Nine Larkin Road in Byfield, and I was involved in drafting the open space bylaw. I was also, you know, very involved in the process of the public hearings and so forth that led to the final decision that approved the, the project. And so, going back to the history of the bylaw, if you go back and look at it, you know, sort of one of the things that was in there was, was public use. And, you know, once we started seeing these projects, and this project, I think, was number two maybe, or number three of our open space, that we interpreted that mean that things like trails were an appropriate part of the use of, of the open space. But the board was always trying to be very sensitive to the concerns of the future residents. And so, whether it be what was called Scotland Heights at the time, you know, over here just off Highfield or Caldwell Farm, the board spent a lot of time trying to figure out, how can we put the trail in the kind of place that we'd like it, which is typically going near the water, the pond in Scotland Heights, or the Parker River over in Caldwell Farms? So, and when you go back and you look at the original plans that were approved, you know, quite a bit of effort went into to create this buffer, trying to use slopes and things like that, which are standard tricks in this sort of game, to maintain the privacy for the future homeowners as well as provide the trail we never thought it would be. You know, we thought that maybe might want to connect up the Governor Dummer or something, but from the point of view of what we approved, you know, it was pretty well staked out. And the other thing that went on during that process was sort of where to site the buildings, because, you know, some board members wanted to have them far from the roads so that it didn't sort of interrupt the rural landscape of Newberry, or at least is what we imagined to be a rural landscape. And so, that driving factor kind of pushed things towards the river, but then, from a conservation point of view, you would like to move things as far away from the river, and especially that buffer zone right along the edge of the marsh, which is a well-known, you know, animal freeway, basically. If you go out there in winter and you look at the tracks, you'll see all kinds of stuff going back and forth. So that was kind of the motivation. So, at this point, I'm no longer on the planning board, it's your folks' decision, but one question procedurally is that if it's considered a major change to the original plan, you have to go back through the whole public hearing process. So one of the things you've got to decide, sort of, and it's, it's always a hard decision because we, I'd been through this kind of process when I was on the planning board, is, you know, if you want to do away with the trail, it's a revision to the original plan. And then the question is, is it a major or minor change? Because if it's a major change, you have to start the whole hearing process for, essentially for a whole subdivision, you've got to start over again. Granted, you'll go through it quicker than you would for a subdivision, but so, there's a couple of those key procedural issues there if you decide that you want to eliminate the trail from the plan. But as I said, the idea with, was, with every single open space subdivision and every one that, subdivision proposal that's come to Newberry since that bylaw was approved by the town meeting, I think every one of them has been an open space subdivision, even though sometimes people are kind of stretching the concept a little bit, I have to admit. But, so, we have a trail, you know, outlined for the Scotland Heights that, again, we tried to use the slope and, and things like that, appropriate distances. So I, I've not been involved at all with the, the current easements, so I don't know how the 50 feet thing got in there, although sometimes, you know, you make easements quite a bit wider than where you're actually going to put the trail, but I, I can't count on that.
Well, it's quite a detailed thing, but actually, the detail, the, you know, the 50 feet, I mean, if it was 200 feet from the property line before, and now it's 50 feet, that puts it further and further away from the homes, because it says it's supposed to be within a 50-foot area adjacent to the property lines.
It, it said it was supposed to...
Not 200 feet.
It went from being 200 feet from the buildings to...
No, so, so they decided...
50 feet from the building.
No closer than 50 feet.
Right, no closer.
But it's, it's, right. And, and it would be, it, it'd be nice if we could get into a discussion about designing a trail, but I'm not sure that we're there yet.
Okay.
But if we were designing a trail, we would design a trail in your interest and in our interest, and it would not be that close to anyone's home. It just wouldn't be. But, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm struck, do you want to add anything?
No, I'll go back.
Anyone else like to bring something forward? Yes?
Hi.
Hi.
Barbara Rantz, Caldwell Farm. We've been thinking about this trail for several years, as you know, and I've tried to think about the advantages and disadvantages. The only advantage that I can really come up with is that you could take a walk or run through a beautiful setting. But when I start thinking about all of the disadvantages, to, not only to the peaceful enjoyment of Caldwell Farm, and remember, we're between two high schools, and a lot of us have raised teenagers or have known teenagers. And when we had our last meeting a few years ago, someone from the fire department, was it the chief, was there, and we asked, "Well, what if there was a fire that was set down there?" And he told us that the type of trail that would be constructed would not be wide enough for any emergency vehicles to get down there. So what is going to happen if a fire is set, or if someone running on the trail is hurt, and we can't get those vehicles down there to help these people? Also thinking about it as conservation land, a beautiful setting, I mean, have you ever noticed when you drive, drive along the highway, are roadways, all the trash that's thrown around? My husband hears me complain about it all the time. We're going to have kids down there, people that probably don't live in the town with water bottles or whatever, throw here, there, wherever, going down the river? What is the point of that? I don't understand that. There's so many other nice places to walk. Why can't we just leave a few places on earth the way they are? We don't have to go in and take them over for our enjoyment. And the last thing I would leave you with is, just because we can doesn't mean that we should. One thing, I wouldn't walk down there because I hear the coyotes down there, the trouble that we've had with ticks and mosquitoes. I don't think I would ever go down there, but that's an individual's choice, but that would not be the place that I would go. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to, to, to the best of our knowledge, there's really no interest in either Triton or Governor Dummer using your trails. I mean, that's just not going to be an issue. It's, it's, it's just not going to happen. You know, they're not interested. And also, because of the nature of the trail, this is not a running trail. This is, this, as I described, if it were, if it were ever built or created, it's not built. It's you figure it out, you last of the Mohicans kind of thing, chopping things down.
It would be a public trail. It will be known by everybody around here that there is a trail through this property. And as, as, as we've been saying, there's no way to monitor it, there's no way to supervise it, there's no way to tell people, "You have to stay on this trail." I mean, they're going to get curious about our buildings and our place, we can obviously see them in the winter, especially when there aren't any trees. It's going to be a situation where people are going to be noticed out there. We're going to not want to know what they're doing or not doing. There's going to be a lot of suspicion. And I'm going to tell you, there's going to be a lot of calls to the police department to come and find out what's going on here, because, you know, as Laura just said, we're right between two schools, and kids are kids, and they could be out there at night during the summer. I mean, there's just no way to supervise any of this. And, you know, we're all senior citizens here. We don't have the ability to go chase people off our property. We don't have the ability to go and have a confrontation. We're just trying to avoid a situation that doesn't have to occur. I mean, I don't know what...
May I address that?
Sure.
I would just like to point out that there's a similar situation in a new report over by Cherry Hill Nursery Development, and that's where my parents lived before that trail was there. And that connects the Cherry Hill Development to Mosley Estate, and they haven't had any issues. So I'm not saying that you won't, but I'm just saying that, of course, you know, nobody wants a trail behind their house, but this was already legally in the documentation before you bought your house, as far as it was presented to me. Now, I'm not saying we're going to move forward with it, I'm just saying the facts of the matter is, is that when you purchased your house, I've been told that you were aware of the trail.
That is not true.
Well, excuse me.
Absolutely not true.
I'm a Realtor.
No.
I'm a Realtor. Either your Realtor should have told you, or you were giving your condominium docs, and you should have read them, and your attorney should have read them.
No.
So you, then, I'm sorry, you can't say that...
Well, I hate to sound like this, then...
We can't, and we are, because...
Then you didn't read your condo docs.
Let me finish.
You were giving the condo docs?
Let me finish. The developer said there was a trail, a conservation trail, around the property, and he said it in such a way that we all understood that it was our trail for our use only. That's what happened. I mean...
Then the condo doc was read.
Well, well...
I'm sorry, but that's...
Jerry, let me just, let me just go over a couple of things. In the master deed, which you should have read, buying the property, it calls for that common land improvements shown on the site plan, use of the open space shall be restricted to passive recreation, walking, cross-country skiing, and similar, and that the replacement of the facilities and to establish pedestrian trails and impose conservation restrictions and open space restrictive covenants on the common land. Now, that's in your master deed. Then in the trail easement, which you, I'm sure were given if you're buying this property, says the town of Newberry, a municipal corporation located in Essex County with address at blah, 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 has, has given the right and easement to use a trail easement in common with others, over, across, and through a defined portion of the property owned by the grantor, limited to that area shown on the trail easement of the area, which you've all seen, I'm sure, which is this area right here. The trail easement area is enormous, it's twice the size of the property that's been developed. So that's the trail easement area. And, and it in, it in, let me just go back there for a second. Caldwell Farm dated September 10th, 2004. The trail shall be located within the trail easement area. The whole purpose is to, is to provide the public access to open space within this project. And then in your HOA, management fees and management objectives, it talks about the open space management plan is designed to allow Caldwell Farm to be an ecologically significant property while allowing the development and usage of by occupants in some passive public access, and some passive public access. There must be a balance to the need for the housing of the public access to land while, to the land while maintaining a diverse plant and wildlife habitat. It's very clear in these documents.
John, we do not dispute that you have the right to go do this. We're not disputing that, whether we were smart enough to go look at the documents...
No, but you were just saying that you didn't see that, you, you never saw this.
Well, we didn't, but that's, you know, we don't dispute you have the right to do this. But we're saying, as Laura just said, that doesn't mean you shouldn't.
Okay, and, so let me, let me go over what was going on in 2002 and 2004. I wasn't here, but I read the docs. Developer comes in and he says, "I want a certain way of developing the property." We start negotiating with them, we say with a certain amount of open space. He says, "Well, if I could do the open space, I want, I want to be able to build more units." So the town concedes and says, "Okay, you can build more units, but we need this public access." So, you, excuse me, you all, because you are the successors and assigns, get more access, excuse me, the town gets screwed, under your scenario. Where is the public benefit for what we just gave you? We just gave you a tremendous public benefit. We allowed the developer to increase his density substantially, and in return for that, we are supposed to get the access to some of that open space that you, that the developer left. And now you're coming back and telling us, "No, you can't have it." Well, I think that's wrong. I think that people of Newberry get screwed that way.
Let me just interject something.
You just have to go to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Sure, sure. I'm just so used to my voice carrying, I don't ever think I need a microphone.
Dave, I would ask you to, to speak to this, too. I, I was a resident of the town, I don't remember it happening exactly that way. What I remember is he talked about big houses. Big houses, four-to-five-bedroom houses, he wanted to develop initially, which means lots of kids, lots of additional expense to the town. I thought he got more units because he said, "I'll make it an over-55 community." Is that not correct?
I can understand, though, why you're a little, why you think that. There was a previous proposal, which, for a variety of reasons, the applicants decided not to follow up on, that was more along the lines of what we just heard about, but the proposal for Caldwell Farm, you know, it started out as a, you know, active adult community, or we call over 65 from day one. And then, sort of, along...
Fifty-five.
Fifty, I'm sorry, 55, yeah. It's like, I'm showing my own age now. So, and then, sort of to speak to Kathleen's issue, we had quite a bit of discussion about the kind of concerns, because we, we would hear this from the developers long before anybody was thinking of moving into these properties, and, you know, based on the sort of research that I and others did, it seemed as though these kinds of trails were almost entirely used by the residents, and these fears of teenage beer, you know, beer parties and so forth. I can tell you where they do them, and they don't do them on this kind of trail, they do it over in the Crane Pond Wildlife Management Area, well off the road and well away from where anybody can see them, and it is an issue out there to get fire, but it's something that, you know, we discussed extensively, both in this development and especially like the Scotland Heights development, and we felt that the, although we wanted that public benefit, we felt that the reality would be that unless you had the interconnected trail system, which is apparently not going to happen anyway, that it would be used almost entirely by the residents based on experiences in other towns with, with similar projects. So, we were trying to, you know, sort of balance that public benefit, and again, you know, if you go back to the original plan, the trail was purposely kept as far away, and I think part of the confusion is that this so-called easement area is essentially the, all of the open space, right? But that the whole goal was always to get that trail to essentially skirt the boundaries of the property so that we wouldn't end up close to any, any of the buildings.
Right.
I just want to add one other thing. When you say that the town gets screwed or doesn't get a benefit, I want to allude to something I said a little bit earlier, which is essentially $400,000 in revenue to the town.
Oh, we appreciate that.
And, and no expenses. You understand that.
And if you want to pay a little more, we'd like that.
We do, we, I'm sure we will next year. But you understand that there's no expense to the town. I mean, it's a good deal for the town.
There are some expenses. That's not true. I, I'm not going to go and debate that, but there are expenses associated with it.
But we understand the benefits, we understand the benefits of Caldwell Farm. Absolutely understand.
And we like Caldwell Farm.
We like it.
We do.
We'd like more of you.
Great, then do what we want to do, and let's move on.
That's, that's the only...
Could I add a couple of things here? I wasn't around when the decision was made on Caldwell Farms, but came in just as it was closing. However, I have done a lot of work to generate both the real facts and try and distinguish them from a lot of the fiction and gossip. I would point out that we have a bylaw, open space residential development bylaw, which is not the one that currently is in place, is slightly different from the one that was in place at the time that Caldwell Farms was approved. However, in terms of its intent and its form, it's essentially the same. And one of the things it requires is, one of the ways that open space residential development bylaws work is there is a threshold, and if you come to the town and want to develop a subdivision, and it has more than four, there's very many, more than four units, then you have to go through the process of designing, not totally down to the last, you know, nut and bolt, but designing a OSRD, an open space residential development. And you have to prove that you can do that and be entitled to the number of units you're suggesting by doing what's called a yield plan, which is basically taking the property and dividing it up in a very conventional manner, like Fatherland Farms, if any of you've been there. It's off Central Street. And so, what happened is that this developer had to do... And so, what happened is that this developer had to do, had to provide the kind of plan deck. It wasn't that he was told by the town that he couldn't do anything else. It was that he had to go through the process, and as he went through the process, clearly, and I actually talked directly to him, it became clear that it was not an economic proposition in his estimation unless he could get some extra units. In other words, he can only put X, I don't remember what that number is, but let's say, let's say fifty-something. And he needed the sixty-six. And so, he made some trades. And one of the things he did was, for example, he cut out the farmhouse down at the front there and put a, a preservation restriction on that farmhouse, which won him, I forget, is it one or two, David, credits for that? I can't remember.
I think it's, I think it's one.
Well, I think it's one for one.
It's, it's one, yeah. So, so that's essentially how the numbers got nudged up there. And I think it's important to understand that this, this was a process that responded to existing bylaws. And that process generated the documentation that John has referred to. And I, like other members on this board, am sorry, because I know what happened to me personally with my own property in town, in terms of what I didn't know because I didn't look far enough. But if you didn't read the documents, you should have. And frankly, people who were involved in the purchase of that unit besides yourself, anyone you retained, and your insurance agent should also have picked up on that. And it was common knowledge fairly soon after the first few units began to sell. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that somebody talked about the value of this land. Well, one of the things that has to happen when a CR, conservation restriction, is drawn up, is it has to go to the state for approval. And if the state doesn't like what they see, if they think it's in fact a situation where the conservation restriction is either badly drawn, or it's frankly something of a boondoggle, then they will shoot it right back to the community and tell them so. In this case, I happen, okay, to be somebody who's involved in environmental kinds of things, and I know a number of the people who were doing the reviewing at this time. And I happen to know the person who wrote this comment, but I want to share it with you. This is on the application for the CR that, that we're all worried about. Well, the outcome of which we're all worried about, which is the trail. This eighty-seven acre CR in Newbury was required to obtain development permits. And it is a great example of an extracted CR that truly adds to the town's conservation estate. That may be a phrase that surprises you, but that's one that's used in the business. It means the total number of acres under conservation in the town. Often, these CRs only pay superficial attention to the natural resource value of the property, but this one does not. It includes salt marsh, beautiful vistas, and, underlined, public access on walking trails. Enjoy the pictures. Jennifer Soper. So, you know, it wasn't just an opinion of a, a small group of people, that, that in fact, that's a conservation value. The thing that now, I guess, occurs to me is, we've had, and I can understand why, impassioned pleas to not do it. So, what do you have to offer? Would be my question.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, hold on, and come up to the microphone.
Hi, Steve McCarthy, resident of Caldwell Farm. You said eighty-seven acres. That Caldwell Farm was a hundred and twenty-five acres.
Mm-hmm.
So, where did the eighty-seven acres come from?
That's the conservation.
That's the conservation area.
It was only built on twenty-five acres. That leaves a hundred acres. So, there's thirteen acres missing.
No, there's acreage, which is the roads, a number of other things. I don't know where the, how your clubhouse figures into that.
The whole thing is twenty-five acres. It's a hundred and twenty-five acres, period, not eighty-seven.
No, he's talking about that area that concerned.
Eighty-seven is really the, is really the conservation area.
I'm saying that they're, they're looking at a document which describes eighty-seven acres of conservation land, and that's what's out there as conservation land, okay?
And it surrounds your property.
And that's been approved and is registered at the Registry of Deeds. Now, if there's a difference, okay, what you got is the rubber areas around each of your units, okay? There is the road. So, if somebody said there was twenty-five acres developed, they, they were talking, I don't know what they were talking about.
Maybe we'll have to look at the engineering plans to see.
Right. Yeah, sure. But I, you know, I mean.
It's not a fabricated number, though, is what he's trying to tell you.
Yeah, it's in the documents.
Well, okay, I'd like to mention, when you said Cherry Hill, were there two high schools
between where you lived?
No, but there's a state park right there.
Okay, but not the high schools.
But a state park that draws thousands of people.
Do you like to make a comment?
Yes.
My name is Tricia Bullis. I live at one-eleven Caldwell Farm, and I just can't keep quiet. I've walked the trails in Madison, Wisconsin. I've walked the trails in Burlington, Vermont. I lived in Marblehead, which is about as dense as you can get, and we had a trail. And there were no problems in any of those places. The towns of Concord and Lexington have a trail. They have, they don't have problems. Trails do not bring great difficulties to anybody, except they do bring enjoyment for the people who live there and for the people who might use it from outside.
Thank you.
Can I rebut that?
Well.
Steve McCarthy, I was postmaster of Lexington, Mass, and I was there when they put the trail in. I had to put up a twelve-foot-high fence because the kids were stealing batteries out of the trucks, and we had nothing but trouble. So, it's not true. And I was there for fifteen years in Lexington, Patricia, and there was a lot of trouble on the, on the, on the trail. In fact, it was a murder.
Can I, can I just close up here? Excuse me, there's someone else who would, wanted to say something back there. Not, someone else, no? Yes.
Thirty-eight Caldwell Farm Road, Art Berardi. My house is, my house, as well as one of my neighbors, would be the closest to this trail. You can do this. Jerry has already said, the legal documentation is there. I had an attorney, I had a Realtor. That easement was buried in the documents. And I don't know what you mean about it being common knowledge after the first four or five units. It was not. And every one of our residents, except for one or two, would attest to that.
You don't blame the town for that, though, do you?
No, I know.
Okay.
I just want, let me, Jerry, let me, let me just say, I think, I just, I want to, I'm kind of a bottom-line kind of guy, and I think what the bottom line here is, we all acknowledge you have the right to do it. There's no question. And you've acknowledged that it's a rustic trail. It's not the cross-country trail that was talked about initially, when we first talked to Governors Academy. It's a rustic trail, which is clearly your right to do. So, the issue is, as Laura said very succinctly, we're just asking you not to do it.
And I guess the only thing I have to add to that is, we don't want strange people on our property. I mean, this is what you're going to allow, is strange people on our property. And I tried to explain in the statement that I read to you, where is the benefit versus what you're going to destroy by doing this? You're going to destroy a lot of goodwill, you're going to spend a lot of money, it's going to be a lot of time and effort, and I guarantee you, this is not going to go away. It really is not. We feel very strongly about this. Yes, there are people that have different views, but by and large, I would say in the ninety percentile, based on the, the meeting that we had four years ago, ninety percent of the people, for sure, do not support a trail through our property. And, you know, it, it is what it is, and we are asking you to be considerate, we are asking you to be sensitive, we are asking you to be understanding, and we are asking you not to do it. And we would appreciate your consideration based on what we've said.
I, I'd just like to clarify about this meeting four years ago. I was on the board then. I have no knowledge of this meeting. So, when you keep on talking about these discussions and stuff, I wasn't involved in it. So, I have no idea what the details were discussed, who were the players in there. So, I, I'm not sure if we're, we're talking about the same trail back then as we are now. I believe what you were talking about back then was something much more extensive.
No, no, I don't think so, because I was at the meeting at, at the time.
You keep referring to the meeting, but I, I'm not, I'm not saying it didn't, it happened, but I'm just saying, I don't know who was there, I don't know what was discussed, you know, so it's.
I can tell you.
What?
Practically everybody from Caldwell Farm was there. We had the, the Newbury Police Department there, the Newbury Fire Department was there, the Newbury.
You say the department, you mean the chief?
Yes.
The two chiefs?
Yes. The EMT, the EMT people were there. We had the member, I think of the conservation.
Doug was there.
Doug would be there, okay.
Group was, was there. We had someone, I believe, from the state as well.
We did, but to your point, it was driven by Governors Academy, who engaged Doug to talk about it.
Right.
It was driven by Governors Academy at the time, not by the planning.
Well, yeah, I just think it's very unusual that a member of the planning board wasn't included in this meeting.
Yeah, what can I, what can I tell you?
The point being is, whatever happened last time.
Maybe you understand why, why we didn't see the.
I, I would just encourage you that to keep an open mind of whatever was discussed before, may not be what the board has in mind, so.
A trail is a trail, is a trail. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 no.
David, a trail is a trail, is a trail.
No.
Yes, it is.
If you, Jerry, if you were to stand up and say that in an auditorium, okay, with people from the National Park Service through, who knows, the Maine Coon Hunters Association, they would laugh you out of the room.
Well.
Okay, you know what, you know what I'm doing? I'm, I'm gonna, unless anybody in the audience wants to chat a little more about, you do? Okay? Yes, you may.
You can sit down.
Come sit down.
Sit down.
And I know, I mean, I live with these people, and I don't want them to hate me. And you made, you made a state, I just want to have an amicable ending to this whole thing. You made a statement that I thought was wise. You said, what are you going to offer us? And another possible solution might be, if everybody is really against this, except the few of us, is maybe offer them a price to buy another piece of land to put a trail in. I mean, I know it's unusual, but, I mean, that might, if, 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 if we don't, I'm just saying it's an option.
Okay.
You have another comment?
Uh, uh, go ahead. Yep.
John Grant, Caldwell Farm. I'm just, obviously you have the right to put this trail in. I'm just wondering, who wants it? You made a statement, one of you gentlemen made a statement that Triton doesn't want it. Governors Academy doesn't want it.
Well, we have to be careful.
No.
You have to be careful what doesn't want.
What they don't want is it for a cross-country trail. But it doesn't mean.
So.
I, I, and I don't, and I don't know what they want.
You can't answer that. You can't answer that question.
I don't, I don't know what they want.
That's the way you put it, so that's the way I interpret it, that, that they didn't want it, or weren't interested in getting involved in it. So, it does seem that maybe they are. Because I can't imagine that the town of Newbury is prepared to spend the money to put the trail in. I mean, they didn't even have the money to get the, the, the traps out for the greenheads. And you're going to tell me that they're going to be building a trail?
Nobody said, nobody said that the town was going to come up and spend money next week. However, there are, there are ways to build trails through volunteers and things like that. So, I don't think that we should get caught up that the town's spending money on trails.
Is Governors Academy pushing this?
I have not spoken to them, so I couldn't respond to anybody.
That we can, they're, nope, they're not.
So, why, is, is the town of Newbury going to pay for it?
Well, one, one way or another.
One way or the other.
It's our, it's, it's not your responsibility. It's the town's responsibility, whether or not that's.
It just sounds to me like.
Whether that's donated labor, or volunteer labor, or actual cash for signs and things like that.
I have it.
And if the town decides that this is worthwhile to pursue, that there's enough, again, this is a, there's enough public benefit to do this, then they would do it.
How would that be determined? Something would go out to the whole town, see if they feel it's a good idea?
Well, I don't, it probably could be at a, a budget hearing, which would be town hearing, town meeting, which would be included if it was a large item. My guess is it's not going to be a large item.
As a selectman, I could come.
Thank you.
I'll put my selectman's hat on as opposed to my ancient planning board hat. It all, it, you're hitting on, hitting on the head, it really depends on the size of the expenditure, so that if it's small, often, you know, we have budgets for sort of parks and recreation and things like that. But if it's something substantial, then it would have to go to town meeting. And, but, as was pointed out, I mean, we've got examples of like where the soccer fields are today, that an Eagle Scout built a trail from sort of the upland, you know, where the soccer fields are, out to a, what we call an Oak Island out in the marsh. So, we've had examples like that, where, you know, whether it be scouts or other volunteers, we have a number of organizations in the area that are interested just generally in, in trail development. It's, there's a lot of ways this can be done, and especially with a rustic trail, it's, there's not much expense involved. It's mainly just getting out there and clearing out a little underbrush and, you know, maybe putting a sign.
There's nothing being built.
Yes, I remember in the original decision also that there was, was sort of sunrise to sunset, there was supposed to be no nighttime activity and that sort of thing. And so, typically, you just have a little sign at either, they both ends come out to Elm Street, so probably right at that entrance point, you know, you would have a little discreet sign just saying what the, the rules are. And quite honestly, again, you know, going back to my planning board days, one of the big problems we actually run into with these open space subdivisions is the residents themselves encroaching on the protected open space, and it's a very typical problem. And so, usually with these subdivisions, we have more trouble enforcing the rules with the residents than we actually do with the limited non-residents who might use a trail system. And we, back in the, when we were approving the final plan, Martha probably remembers this, you know, we actually talked about, should we put boulders or stuff out there to really clearly demarcate where the open space is, so that, to avoid misunderstanding, or perhaps people just trying to push the envelope a little bit, to try to avoid that, you know, adverse impact on the open space. But, you know, our reasoning at the time, really partly when we drafted the bylaw, is that we wanted to make it a win-win situation, so we wanted to get the conservation benefits. But then, even if we didn't give bonus units, the cost of the infrastructure is much less for a development like what you're in as opposed to a conventional development. You've got less roads, you've got less utilities. So, right up front, a lot of developers were interested in this concept because it was decreasing their costs. And conservation land typically increases the value of a property if you abut it. So, and also, I can't remember his first name, Mr. Berry, we really.
Yeah, what is his first name?
Carl.
Carl. We really interacted. It was Alan.
Alan was just here.
Yeah, Alan was the one we were dealing with. And, and he actually really liked our bylaw, you know, and that, that he felt it really worked well for him. And then, you know, we've talked about the bonus units because of the farmhouse and the extra open space. And so, in fact, what's really interesting is after it was sort of settled, I remember having a discussion about the fact that we have another bonus for affordable housing. And, you know, at the time, he was sort of against it, but then we got talking about it, and he said, you know, I should have thought about that. Because he could have gotten even more bonus units, and the affordable housing units would look just like all the other units, so there was no, you know, real concern on, on his part. And so, it was, I must say, on the time when I was on the planning board, of all the developers we worked with, he was probably the one that was, you know, easiest to work with and really was good at sort of working out.
That's good stuff.
Yeah.
That's very good stuff.
They do very high-quality work, you know.
Very good stuff.
So, again.
Won a big award.
That's my, yeah, actually, in fact, that's interesting, because after it was developed. Yeah, actually, in fact, that's interesting because after it was developed.
Obviously you have the right to do it.
Yeah.
I, I guess I just question why.
It's up to these folks.
You know?
I'm out of it now.
I, I see it even if you go forward, that no one's gonna go down there. Or I shouldn't say no one, but very few people would go down there. It's, it's just a terrible place to walk with ticks, mosquitoes, whatever. But, but that's just my opinion. But I, I think, sir, you were asking, what can we get back or what can we do? I think we're already doing enough for this town.
Okay. So any other comments? Well, with that, I think we're gonna put this to bed for the time being. And the, any other board member wanna make a comment?
I just want to thank everybody for coming, for making a comment, whether it's in favor or against. It's nice to show.
Yeah, it is. John?
I was listening and, and that's where it sits right now. I don't know what I think.
I'm good for now.
Good. You're okay? And I think the only thing I can say is, we'll take it under advisement. I don't, I don't know. I remain concerned about my comment, which is that the town gave and gave, and now we're not getting back, and that's a concern of mine.
Let me address that a little bit if I can. I, I guess I would ask you to come back to us and say, if you feel the town lost on this deal, what can we do to make it right without a trail?
That's a good point. And.
Come back to us and, you know, we, we've gone, I, I have, I gave you our point of view, I think, in pretty good detail about how we feel. And, you know, we all live here, we all care about the community. That's not an issue. If you feel the, the community has lost in this deal, tell us what would be a win without a trail. That's my answer to you, David.
That, that's fine, and that's a good answer. And we will, we will discuss it, and I appreciate it. And I also appreciate everybody being here. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mark, you just missed it. Do you want to make a comment to the board?
I would like to make a comment if I have a few moments.
Yeah.
I'd like to just take one minute.
Just introduce yourself.
Right. So my name's Mark Olson. I live at 54 Elm Street, which is a neighbor to Caldwell. So I, you know, I was sitting at home watching this. It led me to the point that I had to drive down.
Wait, this is good news. We think you're the only, we think you're the only one watching. Instead of, instead of Jeopardy?
Yeah, Jeopardy was kind of boring time. So I, I, we agreed as abutters to the approval of that zoning because we were getting access to that piece of land. Anybody who's walked down that property, walked down that road, falls in love with it. The views, the vista, the peacefulness of it. That's why we agreed to that zoning. Otherwise, we would have had the housing with the streets. That would have been fine, too. But we agreed to that because we would get that access. That access was put into trust. That's not your property. That's conservation property. It's not yours to claim. It was signed off, right?
Pay taxes on it.
Certainly. I pay taxes on it, too.
We all pay taxes on it.
I pay taxes on it as well.
What access are you talking about?
You have to get to the microphone because they can't hear you on TV when they watch.
Let me just, let me just say, we're not claiming the property. We have a problem with the use of the property, and there's a big difference there.
This gentleman here claimed ownership to the property earlier tonight.
No, I don't care, man, don't put your finger on it.
Okay.
Calm down.
Okay, so, yes or not?
All right, get close, please.
Thirty-eight Caldwell Farm, Beriducci. What access are you talking about?
Back through the trail, through the back of that.
There is a trail now the Governor Academy has.
Right.
Why not just walk that trail?
Because we wanted that trail and we agreed that we get the trail, it would go all the way back through to the high school. That was the agreement. That's why we signed off.
But, well, that's an agree, but why? Why are you so interested in that? If Triton and, and Governors Academy isn't, you're, you're one resident, you have your opinion.
Right. All of the abutters that walked that property in the past in the history, when it was a farm, when there was corn planted on it.
How many abutters were there?
I don't know, how many are there?
It was a farm.
Eight. There's an eight there today.
Eight, eight abutters.
Yeah, but you don't know who was at the public hearing. It could have been much more a public hearing.
In all of those that walked it, right, it's not the abutters. Again, that was put into a deal. I'm sorry if you didn't read the paperwork on the real estate agreement. That's unfortunate, I agree. But that was the deal, that we would continue to have access to that space. I never would have signed off on that agreement if that had been the case.
So we'll figure out how to get the abutters access?
It's, it's, it's public access.
All right, this is the last comment.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Got a statement and, and a question. Barry Costlo, thirty-six Caldwell Farm Road.
Okay.
There is a trail back there. People walk it a lot. They have access to it. I looked at the documents, I did read them, and I saw the easement, I saw the trail, and I bought the house. Now someone wants to change the deal. And a couple of questions, the main one of which is, where's the impetus coming from to develop a new trail? There is a trail there, and it, it's good for nature walking. You make it any bigger and it's not.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be made bigger. I think it's continuing, continuing in getting, getting, getting access to other properties. I think that's what the idea is, to make it a better, a better trail, not a wider trail.
A connecting trail.
A connected trail.
Yeah.
That's the only thing.
Okay, and just, I'd say, check with public safety because they weren't too pleased about many more people coming down there.
Right, right, I appreciate it.
Can I make a comment on that, Sean? The trails you're talking about behind you are trails owned by Governor Dummer and Adlon Rude. And to my knowledge, Governor Dummer hasn't give anybody except their students or their family members or their staff the right to walk on those trails. Those are private trails right now. There's no public easement over them. So I want you to understand that.
Yeah.
That's why we can't figure out what's driving this.
Well, let me just speak to not what's driving it.
No, 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 let me, you know, I think we're done.
Well, the only thing is, I don't want people to go out of here with some misapprehension that there is some hidden agenda.
There's no hidden agenda. We're just, we're, it's a job that should have been done, and we're trying to do it. Simple as that. Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Lucky, lucky there's no Red Sox tonight. Yes.
It's posted on the agenda.
It'll be on the agenda, but I'll keep, no, Jerry, I'll, I'll get in touch with you. Fine, okay, thank you. Okay, good. Appreciate it.
Thank you, David, for being here.
Yes, David, it was very much appreciated.
That was great, Dan, it is.
Wow.
Having been through all this kind of discussion before, I'm very surprised at your position.
Wow.
Mark, are we really on TV right now, live?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought they taped it, then we played it.
Oh, no, I'm in trouble for.
Okay, now, um.
Thank you for coming.
All right, old, Marsh Meadow.
Oh, yes.
Did you get the docs? Everybody get them and take a look at them? I know George did.
I did, I read them.
I read them. And I have, you know, I know that, David, you've gone back and forth on this thing for, I don't know who is responsible for this, but I am very impressed with the quality of those docs. I'm not kidding. Those, and, and the deal, I think, that the town got. I mean, I, I think it's extraordinary. The, the restrictions on both the, the structures and the landscape, and then the open space, and it's really, I think it's really quite well done.
One thing, which of course is great irony, and I just want to introduce Dan, who you don't know. This is Dan Streeter. Who, or does what, did tonight what he often does at meetings, and I'm going to embarrass you, Dan, is to sit there very quietly when he is aware of a whole bunch of stuff. Because he was actually at the big Donnybrook meeting.
I was behind the table.
Yes, one of them.
You were under the table?
Right, yes, anyway. He's, he's our, he's our trail person.
I got it, I got it.
No, the one thing that's ironic here is that there is no public access.
I understand. But I assumed that that was part of the negotiations.
Well, it was. It was part of the deal. It was something that they were very determined.
I could see that. And so I'm not about to say we have to have it.
Oh, no, no, but the irony is, of course, you know where that, what that land abuts.
Yeah, Martin Burns.
Which is public land.
So it's gonna happen.
Well, this is, as a matter of fact, you know, because Marshall has been so good about all of this.
And they, and they clearly have been.
Yeah. And this is something that will be fascinating to, to see. Will they have to deal with, in fact, incursions from a direction that they really can't control? Or, you know, what will happen? I don't know.
Okay. So is there any discussion on these documents from Marshall Burns, Marsh Meadows?
From Martha.
Uh huh.
In this, and I don't have them probably here because of all this stuff, but in the stuff you sent out, there was a process that we were gonna have to go through.
They still, the conservation restriction needs to go before the Conservation Commission to be accepted and then to the selectmen.
Yeah.
And the building restriction needs to be accepted by the selectmen.
But is the, now, we went through the whole business that, and he's not changed, that the town will accept the CR, therefore it does not have to be held or other. It doesn't have to fall under the state, so it doesn't have to go to the state.
I think the final will go, will go to the state. There's a signature page on it for state approval for the CR. But that happens, I think, after the town has, has accepted it.
But am I confusing it perhaps with something else? Wasn't there some point at which?
We were talking about the building. Originally, there was going to be a preservation restriction on, on.
Right, okay.
The farm, the landscape, and we decided to.
That's the one, yeah.
To do a building restriction fifty years renewable instead.
Right, remember that? Yep, I remember that.
So that's still in place and he, and had, well, okay, so back to my question. Sorry that I got confused. Has the question been asked, because I think it needs to be, of Marshall directly, is that it is, that is the way he wants to go? Because I just learned not, what, a couple of months ago, if he goes that direction, cannot, they cannot change their mind and go to the state later on, except for awful period of term, like thirty years or something.
And it was discussed with him, and I think he, he was, he was the one, his attorney was the one who suggested going this route. Because it's not listed right now, and it would have been quite a process to go through that.
So he's still in favor of that, as far as we know?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So do we need, what action do we need on this?
Well, I think it would be good since, for the board to essentially approve these to go on to.
The four docs?
The four docs, to go on for.
Have a motion?
Yes, I move that we send the four documents in question to the respective town commissions and boards.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
Excellent, thank you. Marshall, thanks you, I'm sure.
Potential zoning amendments for the spring annual town meeting. Site plan review revisions. I did get a modest update this morning, that I guess you guys are making some progress. When will you have something to us?
The meeting before Thanksgiving, so the second meeting in, in.
Okay.
This month. So, but it'll just be the bylaw, not, we haven't yet addressed the, the submission requirements.
Oh, okay, okay. Bylaw by, bylaw draft by, are we meeting just before Thanksgiving?
It's the week before. It's the twentieth.
Just like the twentieth?
Twentieth, yeah.
Okay.
Just throwing out a suggestion, you might want to look at the parking section of the zoning, because there's loading dock requirements, loading space requirements. It maybe ought to be, ought to be reviewed. It's a fairly small truck, and, you know, fifty, we have trailer trucks now, fifty, fifty-three foot trucks that are, take about, almost eighty feet. And you don't get them in a forty-foot space, kind of thing.
So are you suggesting we look at it in relation to site plan review or?
Right, just, well, with site plan review in mind, that's all.
So it would be.
And I'm not saying it's wrong, because I don't think we want to make people put in a truck dock or more than one for a fifty-three foot trailer. But maybe there's something there that if you're gonna have a truck dock, then it should be passable for or operable for.
What, what's driving that? What, what?
I'm just saying, trucks are getting bigger.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the size of loading dock space in, in our current zoning is fairly small. And I'm just throwing out the thought that maybe what it should say, the site plan should say, is that we, if you're gonna have a loading dock, we don't want to make people do loading docks. Obviously, because lots of people don't need them. But if you need one and you want to have one, then it should be, it should have probably a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty space for a turn. It should be such that it can be, it will take a fifty-three foot trailer at least. That's today's new trailer size.
John?
Yes.
The.
Hundred and ten?
Eighty.
What's that?
The heat's on eighty.
Oh. Oh, oh, sorry.
Is it the heat or just the temperature?
Yeah, the original specs for that, the original specs for that.
Yeah.
Came from the ten-year-old Department of Transportation standards.
Okay.
So they probably do need to be reviewed in relation.
Looked over, yeah.
Well, in relation to whether they have changed theirs. Because one of the issues when you deal with commercial property, dealing with loading spaces, is you get into all kinds of other ancillary insurance, OSHA and other sorts of things, all of which DOT is supposed to have factored into what it's recommending.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point.
But, you know, that's, you, you raised a very good point. I'm just suggesting there's a source to check and see what's current.
And the source is MassDOT?
Yeah.
Flood hazard overlay district revisions. Well, that's, that's kind of like given to us, am I right?
Basically, I mean, we have to update the panel numbers, and that's probably about it, and the date.
But there's.
Effective date.
There's a question. And the question is, have we been contacted in relation to the current efforts on the part of the state and the number of communities to go to FEMA about the firm maps and about their.
Right now, David, I don't know that we, well, we, we were at the, all of this was, wasn't I?
What was that chair?
I, I, I'm stumbling here because I thought maybe I told them that, but at the Bruce Tar meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Two Fridays ago, I guess it was.
Oh, the MRBA meeting.
MRBA. It was brought up that, that, that the maps are crushable to some people, not to all. But the thing which is in question is the insurance aspect of it, and whether or not the insurance rate should be put off for an extended period of time. And so Cokely and DeLeo are, are working with the federal delegation to work hard on that. And apparently it's all up and down. If you read the, sometimes you pick up a Times or even a Journal, it's all up and down the seacoast. It's not just us.
Right.
People getting slammed with extraordinary increases in their insurance rates. So it looks at the, it's the insurance issue that's being addressed first. I don't know that anyone has, except for a few individuals, and it's so hard to, to go against FEMA on the maps. Because first the maps are in terrible, the amount of detail is atrocious.
Very hard to read.
Very hard to read. And you have to go out and make your own survey and prove to them that you are not in what they say you are in. So it makes it very difficult for the individual homeowner. There's a lot of confusion on the part of property owners, a lot of confusion on part of, what I understand, brokers, who are trying to sell properties out there. So it's, it's right now, not, not a happy time. And that's all I know, but it's, I think there's another meeting this Friday of the Tar group, MRBA.
I haven't, haven't heard.
But he's trying to get, Bruce, I don't think he'll be successful, is trying to get somebody from FEMA to come specifically here. And what you've been telling is FEMA is just doing these generalized, like the last meeting I had was on Lynn.
Well, there is going to be another one in our area. Colleen Bailey at DCR has been pushing to get, get that happening. I think the government shutdown and everything else kind of delayed all of that process, but there is going to be a meeting for our, our area. But we don't have a date on that yet. As far as I know, the maps themselves will be moving ahead unless some community appeals them. And it doesn't appear that anybody is launching an appeal at this point. So I think John's right, it's really more the, the insurance impacts that are subject to.
Although I am still flummoxed in, in this little drawing I gave you the other day. I mean, if our highest moon tide is like ten feet and the lowest is like minus something, so that means the mean is five. something, so that means the mean is five. So the flood, the base flood elevation wa, is right now eight feet above that, which means that it's, that five from mean to the highest tide is five, and so it's right now at three feet. That's what it says, right? But what it's gonna go to is eight feet above the highest tide. So the height of this room is what they're saying, the highest tide that you have down at, you know, in your, your salt marsh, the highest tide that you get.
Yeah.
Eight feet above that.
Kido.
That's what this is saying.
Wow.
Right?
Thirteen feet above me.
Thirteen feet. They're going from eight feet to thirteen feet.
Yeah, but what you've just said, those two statements don't, but never mind, because the math is weird. Um, what they've basically done is by increasing it by five feet, they've sent, you know, the zones inland in, in, in ways that they never have before.
Right, right.
But also, if you begin to read the text, that is being used in relation to the mapping, what I discovered recently is that the way they, it is described on the maps, okay, if you go online, and the way it is described by the, the ruling that allowed them to do this, okay, is different. And by that I mean, they have a bunch of different kinds of zones, and one of them is the A-zone, which is subsectioned into, what, four, or something like that, I think?
Well, there's the, the A-zone, and there's the AE-zone, which has the elevations that have been determined. There's the AO-zone, which is the overwash.
Right, so, well, you can find at least two apparently official definitions of those.
Of what the thirteen feet is above.
No, of, of how you determine whether it's an AO-zone or not.
Oh, I know that. Right, I got that. I, I still am trying to figure out what's the height difference between mean, mean sea level and base flood elevation.
Right, well, that's-
And I'm just, I've tried to-
I actually had the same question for Doug when I was looking at the maps.
And what did he say?
Um, I forget the answer, but if you talk to him, he can-
I will try, because I even drew it out. But I showed, I showed-
I, I had the same thing, because I was wondering if I was in it.
John?
Yeah?
Isn't it based upon storm surge from a class one or class two hurricane?
Right, so, so, so it's, so it's, you have your high tide, which we had like, like two weeks ago, and that's ten feet. And then what they're saying is that the flood, storm surge is this room above that.
I don't think so.
But back on the class of the hurricane?
No, I don't think so. Mean sea level is the datum for the FEMA, FEMA's flood. So what we're talking about, mean sea level is five feet below, in round figures, five feet below-
High tide.
-normal high tide.
Right, so-
I, I hashtagged that, though, and that's not what I got when I asked him.
So, so if, if that's, if this is, if this is the low tide, and that's the high tide.
Yep.
And this is the mean.
Yep.
Then the distance, the new thirteen feet is this.
Starts there, yes, that's how I see it.
So, so it's eight-
Doug doesn't say that, huh?
So it's eight feet above that.
That's what he says, good.
Well, I, no.
It's eight feet above the highest tide.
Oh, yeah, that's right. And I don't think that's such a bad number.
Okay, because you guys have-
For one thing, the highest tide is not just five feet. You do get astronomical tides that are, you know, six feet above the sea level.
Even, even, even that.
Yeah, you do get, without any storm surge. They happen. They don't happen all the time, but you line up the sun and the moon the right way, and you're up there.
So, so how do you calculate that one? Do you, how do you find out what that one is? Is that predicted?
Tide tables.
Look at the tide tables.
So the highest one I found was ten foot, ten feet, so I have to go through them all again?
Oh, yeah, you, that's not it. You, you're, you're up to twelve.
Think it's twelve?
In cases, yeah.
So then, so then for, it's only six feet above.
As a total range, yeah. But that doesn't happen every month, but it, it does happen.
Standardly, this whole room, wherever it is.
And then you throw the hurricane on top of that, which is gonna get worse and more frequent.
All right, so you know what? It's nine fifteen, let's move on. Uh, so, have we talked that one today?
Yeah.
All right, medical marijuana? Well, we have to start a process.
Yeah, we have to start a process. There was, I was at the MVPC Planning Director's, uh, meeting today, and I think we're all struggling with that at the moment, and there's, I think MVPC might be trying to facilitate more of a dialogue for us to, you know, sort of deal with how to approach it. Some, some communities have done it very simply by amending their table of use regulations, others have, um, created overlay districts, and, um, I think it would probably be good soon for us perhaps to form a, a subcommittee.
I think we need a subcommittee, I really do, and I know, have a bunch, huh? You're already on one. Um, who wants to be on this marijuana? George?
First, let's, who, who's interested in the topic?
We just asked.
Yeah, okay.
Who's interested? George is. Who else?
Well, I'll be, I, I should be on it.
Thank you, Martha.
All right, so those two.
A subcommittee, too.
Because the, the question is, we had also talked last time about moving forward on some, um, review of the master plan, but I think this takes precedent. We've got to get this out of the way first.
Right.
So I'll join you on the medical marijuana, okay?
I will.
All right. All right, so it's, it's, uh, George, Martha, and myself. Okay, and zoning district boundaries, what, oh-
And those were the, the commercial highway A.
The cleanup, are those cleanups?
Yeah, cleanups of, specifically the one at the Ale Prime Gas Station and the Commercial Highway A across the street.
Could you just prepare for sometime soon what exactly the issue is for us? Okay.
Well, isn't the issue that they're all under commercial highway?
Um, no, the issue is that the, the written description of those two districts is-
Right.
Is indecipherable, basically, and what we've been showing on the maps is not really-
So it's actually the boundary changes and not looking at the actual commercial highway descriptions for Scotland Road versus the gas station versus that?
Right.
Because we did talk about doing that, but we're not going to do that right now, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Route one overlay district, don't know.
Um, you know, this, this is probably a backburner.
That's a blackburner. I mean, I think it's an interesting idea. We had a nice discussion about it last time, when we talked about the possibility of putting, you know, specialty stores and antique shops and like the one that's right at the bridge, which is really done nicely. How he does sells, how he sells stuff with that junk shop next door, I have no idea.
What's happened on that? Does anybody know?
Uh, it hasn't been back on the agenda, actually.
You mean to give it a business license?
Business license.
If this was to go for the annual town meeting, we'd have to have it by the first week of January, correct?
Don't have it. So, let's just take it off the list. I mean, it's, it's something we should-
I think it's a long-term-
I think we should take a look at it, just as we should do the master plan. Okay, anything further on Middle Road?
Um, there are actually a couple of other zoning, uh-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
There was a, there's a very weird law, the Middle Class Tax Act of 2012, which makes reference to wireless communication facilities, um, that basically, um, uh, says that there can't be, I can't paraphrase it very well, but, um, you know, no public process or public hearing for amendments to the towers as we have in our zoning right now, so I think they have to-
Like right now, when the ZBA, they go to the ZBA, you mean?
They have to go to the ZBA for anything, if they're adding anything to that.
And they don't have to anymore?
And they don't have to, so I think we need to amend our bylaw for that.
Wow.
Are there height restrictions? I know there are now.
Um, I don't think it references the height restrictions. Um, I think it's more kind of a process-
Okay.
... thing.
When they come to zoning, they come about the lily and hen, there's, some of the antennas are big, and they're changing the power of the, mainly is what they're doing, is that, and it, it seems like they go into an awful lot just to come and change the power of the antenna.
Right, so I think that was too-
But what about, do you have to look at aesthetics? Is that not a concern?
No, not really, because it doesn't really, it doesn't really make a difference on what they look like, it just, they book the same.
But quantity-wise, like-
No, they actually, sometimes they have, um, a bunch of little ones and they make it a bigger one.
Oh, okay.
So they're changing it that way.
Have you ever seen these ones, by the way, where they camouflage them with-
Yes, with Christmas trees.
Christmas trees.
And beautiful, everything else.
They look so phony.
I bet, you know, you know, I really don't like them. I, I, no, I, I, at first I said, well, that's a good idea, and I said, eh, no, it's not.
No.
You couldn't fool a chipmunk with that.
I bet you there's not a bird around that close near that tree.
And, uh, Sam, Sam also has a couple of things that have come up, so he and I are gonna talk, talk about that and see if we should add them to the list for the spring.
Okay. Anything new on, did they put the culvert in at Weir?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you seen it?
No, I just saw the road, I was down there, I guess, ten days ago, when, after the road was put in, and there was just a, you know, stuff in the, in the, in the road. I hadn't seen the culvert yet, though, so it's there.
The culvert's out there.
They, they have built the Great Wall of China.
Yeah, it's huge.
I, I haven't driven by it since it was installed.
And the problem is, it does in no way replaces what was there. It's twice the size.
Much bigger.
I, I think it's more than twice the size. It's tw, it's twenty feet, isn't it?
Oh, well, no.
The length, the cross-sections, I bet you it is.
Well, the other thing is, if you could have hung a sign out on Middle Road saying, hey beavers, looky, looky, that culvert is exactly that. And so I don't know what they're gonna do to prevent, you know, the beaver family who have been there for several years and have gone away and will certainly come back saying, hmm, I'm blocking it up.
Hey.
So, but as far as this going on, it, it was not an issue for the planning board to be involved, and we weren't notified because it was a town-related thing.
Right, but my question is, is the, is the butter still concerned? Do you know?
It's about done now.
No, but I mean, she's still ticked off. Okay. Uh, ENF circle finishing, uh, new report termite.
The allegations were correct. It was done without erosion control and so forth.
Right.
Which got, did get corrected.
Is this, is this just, we, we just got the notice?
Yeah, that's an, uh, basically an-
Environmental notification form?
Right. We've received it, it's in my office, if anybody wants to take a look at it. I think there will be public notice going out and then an opportunity for the planning board to comment.
So this is exciting. We might actually get a development in there after.
Yeah.
It takes some while to clean it up, though. But that would be fun.
It would be nice to have that stop being an eyesore.
Did you know, I worked in the soil remediation project for the Wildlife Center down off of Modest Street. That used to be a hasway site.
Oh, boy, that was, that was dreadful.
Where, where's that Wildlife Center, where's that?
PCBs?
Across from Japa, Japa Flats, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the guy that used to own that-
Oh, 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 you mean the, the Odoban?
Chopped it up into pieces.
The one across from Odoban.
You mean the one that the feds built?
Yeah, right.
It's a great building. You know, the, the-
Jonathan Flipside was at it very far when I was a kid.
Jonathan Wood.
Oh, yeah?
I think-
It's a fabulous design.
Or did he, did he not make that one? I can't remember.
I feel Village Roadway improvements.
Oh, it's great.
Really?
Yeah.
All I know is that it was heated geothermal.
Yes, and that's one-
It failed.
Do a little bit more elaborate, George. A little bit more elaborate, yes.
Move it along.
Martha, would you give us quick updates on Byfield and Plum Island?
Yes, um, the Byfield Village Roadway Improvements Project, um, was originally, uh, you know, just for reconfiguration of intersections and so on and so forth, but as part of it, uh, because of the intersection changes, there were some catch basins that needed to be addressed, and coming out of that, John and the, um, engineer from, um, Howard Stein Hudson met with, actually Chief Pearson and, um, Tim to talk about the whole drainage system down there. So we're now looking, um, at getting a scope of work from the engineers to address the drainage. It'll probably be done in two phases. We'll do the drainage first and then the roadway improvements second.
Is there gonna be money to do that? Because that, the drainage work is, is bigger than a breadbox.
Right, right.
Really?
Yeah, oh, it's, oh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's horrendous. Serious, serious, serious money. Now, it's one of those things that there's tremendous EPA value in doing that drainage work. I would not ever recommend doing it for that reason alone, because we can make points so much cheaper. However, from the standpoint of a functioning drainage system, it makes zero sense to go paving on top of a piece of junk.
Right.
I mean, it's like, uh, putting ball tires on a brand-new Cadillac.
Well, the other thing is, if they dig up as much as seems to be possible, they're probably also opening up the possibility of doing some traffic reengineering, right? At the same time.
Well, I mean, I think that's the end goal, is maybe doing-
The whole purpose of it was to do traffic engineering.
Well, no, but what I'm getting at is, is that, that if you don't do the drainage, you're never gonna get the leverage to get the traffic issues in any way, I think, dealt with. But if you do the drainage, then you, putting it together as a package, that's all. We, it's just that this thing-
If we did the track, the traffic first, that goes, flies in the face of any kind of common sense, because there's no way to fix the drainage without literally tearing up almost the whole road.
Right, right.
And it, it's not gonna be a patch, it's gonna be a total curb-to-curb repave. And it makes no sense to do other than what Martha's saying, just do the-
So the idea is we'll-
Drainage first, and, uh-
And then let it sit and settle for a year, and then we'll do the paving afterwards.
Is this all state money?
Um, we're looking at Chapter Ninety funds.
Right.
Um, we've got some, I think, we had close to enough, I think, to do the roadway improvements, but now we've got to go back and take a look at it for the drainage, so...
Any other sources of money for that?
I think we'll, you need to see how the, um, how the estimate comes out and-
Yeah.
-that kind of stuff.
Should be done.
Because I, I would expect to be more money for engineering, just right off, out of the chute.
Well, I think, um, I think that can come out of the Chapter Ninety funds as an extension to that project.
Yeah, but that's, that's way smaller than the two, but right off the bat, that you, we need to-
Right.
-pay him more, because you're doing substantially more work.
So we're getting an estimate from them to, to do the work.
Okay, so you, you don't have any estimates of cost?
Not yet.
Okay, all right.
That's in the works.
And about Plum Island?
And Plum Island, uh, traffic, Tony Kamornick from MVPC has done, um, and he and his team have done a, a study of the traffic, the parking issues on Sunset, um, and, you know, related issues down there.
Right, 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 right.
And, um, there's a, a final draft, just a few tweaks, and that's gonna be ready to be released shortly. That'll be presented to the Selectmen.
What are the parking issues on Sunset? Just the restaurant?
Um-
I think it's mostly the restaurant.
Primarily the restaurant, but-
David's man at the restaurant.
Other, other people, beachgoers parking there and-
Yeah, it, the unresolved parking issues on Plum Island really have played into this, and so, it looks so weird.
Can I ask a question on this subject? Is there, um, Can Street or Three Boston Road? Um, I'm just curious whether this is, includes any other additional parking for the public so that they can access the beach, and in what way that might be, what, what, what are we thinking about there? Olga Way?
One, one of the possibilities is to-
I was kind of told that-
Take Olga Way back to-
The way it was described to me was that the restaurant wanted to have all their patrons park on Olga Way. I don't know if that's true, but, you know, Plum Island has lost a lot of public parking.
Right.
I mean, when they put the water system in, all the hydrants around the side of the street that's got-
Got the park.
They took, they took one, they got a sidewalk on one side and hydrants on the other side. So, we probably have half the amount of parking we had before the water system went in out there, on-street parking. There's no on-street parking south of the center, you know, it's just, it's, I, I hope if you're looking at it, you're looking at it from a little larger perspective than the Sunset.
Yeah, that's the idea, because we have lost a lot of parking down there. We lost That's the idea, because we have lost a lot of parking down there. We lost Old Go Way during the water and sewer project, so, you know, one of the ideas is to bring it back.
Martha, who's doing that study?
Um, MVPC.
Oh, MVPC, I'm, right, 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 guys. Okay, liaison reports, selectmen, do you have anything? I missed, I've been missing meetings. Anybody who've gone to the last one?
Um, I, I was there. I don't think there's anything significant.
David?
You probably read about me in the paper.
Really?
No.
No?
No, I didn't. Any like in the Globe?
The MVPC Executive Committee acts as a board to discontinue county roads, and the town of Merrimack came to us some eighteen months ago and asked to discontinue a stretch of river road.
Oh, yeah, it's a big issue.
And we voted on it last week.
What'd you vote?
I personally voted not to discontinue it. Unfortunately, four of my fellow commissioners voted to discontinue it.
Apart with where they get the landslides?
Yeah, yes, right, yeah. And, you know, it was against a lot of public opposition in terms of doing that, et cetera, et cetera. It was a, you know, a fairly well-covered article in the news, the Daily News. And it's one of those tough things, you know, the difference between economics and, and, and tradition and other kinds of things, and the impatience of towns to get rid of...
Would you explain the jurisdiction that the town has and MVPC has on that?
Oh, well, it's, it's only in Massachusetts. When Massachusetts discontinued whatever it was, all of its counties except, I think, four, but particularly Essex County was one of those, they were left with a number of problems. And one of the problems was that there were a number of so-called county roads, which had been laid out by the county, right? And this road had been ironically laid out only in nineteen sixty-three in order to straighten it by the county. Prior to that, no, it turned up at the last meeting we had, nobody really kind of knew who'd done it. And so what the, what happened was, they did that, and then somebody pointed out, and the legislature sort of sucked its thumb and said, well, what can we do? And some bright spark said, oh, give it to the regional planning agencies. And so the regional planning agencies got to be the county in this case.
Do you have the county engineering department in effect?
In a sort of way.
Because they had survey crews and planned the houses and all that.
Yeah, we were actually the county commissioners in effect, yes.
So the, that reverted to the MVPC from Salem, huh?
What it, what actually happened is all of those things reverted to the town. They became town roads.
Okay.
And the responsibility of the towns.
How about the admin, though, the engineering, et cetera?
Right.
Who got that, the towns?
Ah, big question. Nobody's quite sure.
Nobody's sure, I say. Well, explain why we don't see a lot of surveys out, going on out there.
Well, that's probably true, yes.
All right, John?
Nothing that we haven't talked about.
ZBA? All right, I would like to have someone call for ending the meeting, please.
Oh, I have one comment. I will not be here the first meeting in December.
Dan?
And, and?
Okay.
And why is that?
Ricky?
I will take your final that night.
I guess that's okay.
Your last final, your final final.
I will join you in the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I, I.
Okay.
Before you go, one announcement. Turns out that they used to give you the...
Oh, yeah.